Is any of the board here?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be surprised if they didn't come in.
I thought it was supposed to be the board.
Yeah.
That's what we were very clear.
I wouldn't be surprised if they don't come in.
Heinele Owen.
Well, here comes.
Oh, okay. Now you got one.
There's four minutes left.
Yeah, that could come.
That's true. Our mayor's not even here, so.
Who's that other guy? Do you know that other guy?
That's her attorney. We met once with him.
No, I've never saw him.
Yeah.
Did he have a...
Yeah, well, Allison and I had a meeting and the woman came along with Jerry and that guy to kind of talk about what they were doing.
That's been going on for two years?
Uh, yeah.
Past three directors? Do you know if she was the one who was at the meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
That was the one that came in.
I did. You too.
Hey, Rick.
The one that just came in? Yeah, she said that. I didn't know. I don't like that.
I think with Urban Land Institute or something like that. That's what she said, not the Housing Authority.
Oh, okay.
She has some connection with the Urban Land Institute.
I think she does.
I don't know.
Well, apparently they don't have meetings that follow open record themselves.
Hello. Good, Rob. How are you?
Good.
Wrong one.
That's okay. He probably got stepped up. Is the office coming together?
I have a full-on battle campaign going. It's nasty. They're being ugly. Did you expect anything out of it? Tell them the truth. Yes. Say it's subjective.
Okay.
Your lady's putting the songs on.
Excuse me? Thank you.
I'm starting to see light at the end of the tunnel.
Are ya?
Okay, if I can get folks to take their seats, we're gonna start here in just one second. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council study session. We call this meeting to order. Our first agenda item is Inglewood Housing Authority joint meeting. Members from the board of the executive director... Members from the board and the executive director of Innovating Housing Concepts are present to meet with council. Welcome. Please pull up a seat. Thank you for coming down this evening and, you know, we'll do a little round robin of introductions. So Jerry, maybe you can kick us off on that?
Sure. I'm Jerry Graber, Executive Director of Innovative Housing Concepts. This is our attorney, Dave Heistercamp from Wagonlander &amp; Heistercamp. This is our vice chair, Jennifer Haynes. And our chair apologizes for not being here tonight. She had to go to Houston to help her daughter, so she wanted to send her apologies.
Thank you so much for that. Council, maybe we should return the favors since we've got some new folks here.
Sure. Hi, I'm Amy Martinez, council member at large.
Steve Yates, at large.
Rick Gillett, Mayor Pro Tem in District Four.
Joe Jefferson, our mayor and representative from District One. Welcome again.
Allison McKenna Brown, City Attorney.
Eric Kex, City Manager.
Laura Barantine, District Three, and the liaison for the Inglewood Housing Authority.
Rita Russell, at large.
Linda Olson, District Two. I missed you all. Former Inglewood Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you. Director Graber, do you have any presentation maybe you want to start us off with?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for inviting us to speak here tonight.
Is this better?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. And we're just glad that we could come and present some information. And we'll provide information first, a snapshot of our programs and what we do. And then we'll have an opportunity to answer questions at the end. So first of all, who are we? Inglewood Housing Authority, doing business as Innovative Housing Concepts, is a local organization that is authorized by state statute pursuant to CRS 29-4-204-4. It was formed in February 1973 and operates in the following areas: As a direct owner, provider of moderate to low-income housing; As a developer of moderate to low-income housing; As manager of moderate to low-income housing, including HUD subsidized and Section 8 Housing Choice voucher rental assistance programs; And a partner in IRS tax credit programs. Also, as a construction manager of both rental and homeownership homes for moderate-income families whenever possible. Policy decisions are made by a five-member board of commissioners who are appointed for five-year staggered terms. The mission of Innovative Housing Concepts is to assist lower-income families in a non-discriminating manner with safe, sanitary, decent, and affordable housing opportunities as they strive to achieve self-sufficiency and improve the quality of their lives. Our intent is to provide affordable, quality housing that's responsive to the community's needs. We strive to uphold the ethical stewardship of public funds and assets. That means efficiently using resources to create the greatest good for the benefit of the community. Our philosophy is to provide a stepping stone to self-sufficiency. Innovative Housing Concepts has an annual budget of approximately $5.6 million. We provide subsidy to private landlords in the community in the amount of approximately $3.4 million. So that's the lion's share of our budget is housing assistance payments. We have 14 employees, and that takes a lot of our budget also. EHA is committed to upgrading and modernizing its housing stock as much as possible with the funding it receives from HUD and available grant funds and other sources of funding. And as we all know, HUD has been reducing their assistance lately. And we think from all forecasts, it'll be 17% less next year. As far as our portfolio, EHA owns or manages just under 220 units of rental housing. So we're not a large landlord. That 220 units includes 110 public housing units. Orchard Place is a seven-story high-rise consisting of 100 one-bedroom senior and disabled units. And we have five duplexes at scattered sites in the city. So that's our public housing. We have 104 units under HUD's Section 8 New Construction Multifamily Program. And that Simon Center, another seven-story high-rise consisting of 104 one-bedroom units. We have an office building with two rental spaces upstairs, and we have four market rate units. We also manage Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers for Inglewood and for the Sheridan Housing Authority. Inglewood has 309 vouchers leased. Forty-eight of those are in unincorporated Rappahoe County, 225 in Inglewood. Thirty-six have ported out to other housing authorities. Sheridan has 160 vouchers leased, 37 in unincorporated Rappahoe County, 105 in Sheridan, and 18 have ported out to other housing authorities. As far as waiting lists, Inglewood Housing Authority currently has 794 individuals or families on our combined waiting list for housing. Section 8 has 286 for Inglewood and 244 for Sheridan. Orchard Place, senior disabled, has 63 on the waiting list, 55 on wheelchair accessible for a total of 118. And Simon Center, we have 47. For the duplexes, which are two to four bedrooms, there's only 10 units. We have 99 people on that waitlist. All the waiting lists except for the wheelchair accessible units closed in 2014, and we will reopen those when the current waiting lists are depleted. So there's a lot of demand and not a lot of supply. And we have a lot of people coming in every day asking to get on the waitlist. And unfortunately, we have to turn them away because there's not enough housing. EHA maintains a preference on the waiting lists. For high-rise buildings, the preferences are elderly for Simon Center, and elderly or disabled for Orchard Place. For our family duplex units, the preference is for working families. And what that means is the people with a preference will move to the top of the list. As far as resident screening process, for the properties owned and managed by Inglewood Housing Authority, we conduct a four-part screening process. We do a criminal background check, we do a credit check, home visit, and landlord references. For Section 8, the screening process is basic. Income verification, background check. We see if they owe money to other HUD programs. And then we encourage landlords to do their own screening of the residents and to determine suitability for tenancy. So how the Section 8 program works, applicants are briefed by the Housing Authority once they're selected from the waitlist. And we brief them as to family obligations, HUD regulations, and payment standards. Payment standards are basically the amount of rent that they can afford to pay. Following the briefing, participants are provided with a voucher, and then they begin their search for housing. We have a lot of people that aren't able to utilize their voucher because they can't find a unit that they can afford. So, but unfortunately, we can't help them find units. They're on their own for that. Participant rents are based on their incomes, generally 30% of their income. The remainder of the rent is paid in the form of a subsidy to the landlord. Landlords are limited to asking rent in most cases within the payment standard. When a participant finds a unit to rent, there's a three-way agreement. There's a lease between the landlord and the tenant. There's a family obligations agreement between the participant and the Housing Authority. And then there's a request for tenancy approval and HAP contract between the Housing Authority and the landlord. If a tenant is evicted by the landlord, they lose their voucher and their assistance. Any landlord can rent to a Section 8 participant, provided that the unit passes inspection. Vouchers are portable, and participants in good standing can move from one jurisdiction to another anywhere in the United States that has a Housing Authority with a Section 8 program. With the constant reduction in federal subsidies, most housing authorities have begun to pursue other revenue sources. Those include market rate units. Inglewood Housing Authority Board of Commissioners made that decision, and we need to prepare for life without HUD. Or at least prepare now to remain financially stable in light of the ever-reduced financial subsidies. Our agency has taken notes of recent efforts to re-federalize money and is working to set up a 501(c)(3) to separate non-HUD assets from the HUD assets. Under the 501(c)(3), we may also set up separate LLCs for each property. Admiring the efforts of the city to rebrand with their new PR campaign, "The Art of Community," and the new logo, and in light of numerous other housing authorities that have rebranded, for instance, Littleton Housing Authority is now South Metro Housing Options. Lakewood Housing Authority is now West Metro Housing Solutions. Fort Collins Housing Authority is now called Housing Catalyst. City of Boulder Housing Authority is now called Boulder Housing Partners. The Inglewood Housing Authority Board made a decision to rebrand, and now we are Inglewood Housing Authority, doing business as Innovative Housing Concepts. A lot of thought went into that process. A previous city council liaison suggested rebranding would clear up some confusions of citizens who thought that the Housing Authority was just another department of the City of Inglewood. Other local housing authorities offered that it helps remove some of the historical stigma associated with Housing Authority projects. And is very beneficial for marketing purposes when we lease market rate units, even though we only currently have four market rate units. And now we have Dave Heistercamp to discuss some demographics, as well as the legislative background and enabling legislation and EHA participation in tax credit properties.
This will be the far less interesting part of the presentation, I'm afraid. I've been brought in to do a lot of the dry legal stuff, but sometimes it helps to look back, especially when we're in a transitional period like Inglewood Housing is. And full disclosure, we represent about half a dozen public housing entities in the metro area, from large to some of the smaller ones like Inglewood, to some of the very, very small ones like Hudson Housing Authority that has 18 units of affordable housing. So we kind of see the trends going on all over the metro area. I would add, there is another important reason, before I get into the stuff, the other stuff that I want to talk about, for rebranding and for creating these 501(c)(3)'s for ownership. Several years ago, HUD went through an audit process and found that by natural progression, a lot of housing authorities had started to accumulate non-HUD subsidized properties, tax credit projects, other subsidized properties from other sources. And in the layering of the various financial deals and to develop those properties, to manage those properties, HUD decided that having one entity that owned and controlled both the federally subsidized assets as well as the privately subsidized assets could create a situation, intentionally or otherwise, where you essentially would put your public assets in jeopardy by borrowing as the entity. If the entity pledged its assets or income in too general a way, or the bank used some general depository language, suddenly HUD realized, hey, all our publicly assisted units are on the line. And so they made every housing authority in the country go through an inventory of assets and an identity of interest process. And for some, it was quite a bit of disentangling. Inglewood had not had that many private assets on the books, so the process wasn't as great for them. But HUD has said, if you're gonna hold multiple assets, be sure you're not inadvertently or directly jeopardizing. If you're gonna go out and find other sources of funding and find other investors to help develop housing, don't pledge our assets accidentally just because you're a public housing authority. So that was one important reason that HUD had identified. Two things that I'd like to address, kind of the history of where housing authorities come from in a nutshell. For those of you that haven't been a savant like myself for the last 25 years and just delved into this program, the original U.S. Housing Act happened in 1937 under FDR. And that was after a big push in the cities. Denver, it turns out, was one of the key cities that had advocated for some kind of public housing assistance. Their downtown area was compacted with a lot of workers and a lot of housing and a lot of single mothers at the time, believe it or not, that were trying to support families. And so as part of the New Deal there, they passed the U.S. Housing Act, which essentially let public assets, mostly through bond issue, be used to develop housing that would then be affordable for working-class people and people that needed a place to live. And also to set some property standards about that. We see the decent, safe, and sanitary language. That's original U.S. Housing Act language to say, we don't want slum lords. We don't want places we wouldn't be happy to live ourselves. And so that's when that standard arose and went on quite happily through the 60s without HUD ever being there. One thing that the U.S. Housing Act required, they said, we want to distribute this money to all the states. But in order to do that, the states will have to adopt ordinances or statutes to allow creation of housing authorities. And there'll have to be a few features that are the same. You can change the wording around, but you have to allow municipalities and counties and cities to look at what they need and decide whether it's right for them. Obviously, in 1973, Inglewood took that step. And then if you do create them, since these are gonna be federal assets, we don't want them subject to the same taxation. You know, we can't control taxation. And in all the municipalities in 50 states, we're gonna declare a federal asset policy from the top down that if you want us to bring HUD, what is now HUD money, what was then federal housing money into your state, you're gonna have to agree that a housing authority's properties and assets are gonna be tax exempt. And so Colorado, like a number of other states, almost all of them, adopted those standards. Some states went further and adopted other types of governments, tribal governments in some states in North Dakota and Nebraska. If they form an entity, they get automatic tax exemption too, whether they're operating on trust land or not. So that's always been a feature. That was the federal government's baseline, is saying, we need tax exemption. Realizing that that meant that municipalities may be giving up, on the long-term, a tax base in exchange for the development of affordable housing, they did allow for payments using federal monies of what's called a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot payment. And that was to be done under another form dictated by the federal government called a cooperation agreement. Currently, Inglewood Housing and the City of Inglewood are subject to one of those cooperation agreements. And every year, in order to offset the tax burden of providing police and fire and other city services to those properties, Inglewood Housing Authority essentially makes a user fee payment to the city. And that's varied over the years, but it's somewhere the $23,000, $24,000, I believe, is what annually comes over to offset that tax burden. That number is calculated based on the number of units the Housing Authority owns and operates that are HUD-funded units. This is only federal money, so it has to be your HUD-funded units, which doesn't include the Section 8 units, just the public housing properties. And then there's a little formula the federal government makes up that is supposed to account for a portion. It's not supposed to be a one-for-one replacement of tax dollars, but it's supposed to represent the operational expenses of having those housing units in your community. A few years ago, Colorado won a step better, recognizing that we were in a bigger development boom, that it was getting harder in their experience through redeveloping big city infill areas like happened up at the old Stapleton Airport, to attract developers to redevelop those areas, but also to give them some incentive to keep some of the units that are being developed as affordable units for low-to-moderate-income individuals. Instead of, when the market goes up, obviously, the incentive for the developer is, how many, you know, seven-figure units can I put in? How many houses can I build? How quickly? And often, then the needs of the working-class population or the affordable housing population, which is always there, don't get considered. And so the state, a couple of years ago, put in an additional provision in the state statutes for Colorado that says, for the period of development or substantial rehabilitation, if you have a Housing Authority participating in the ownership of that project during that phase, there is also an ad valorem tax rebate for the materials that go into that renovation. It only lasts for the period of reconstruction or new construction and not any farther than that. At the time, I believe, Inglewood had already inked two deals on tax credit projects. The law came in. There was the normal one-year delay before the law took effect. And so by the time Inglewood had finished its part of the development of those projects, the developer was required to go back on their own and see if they could implement any of that tax exemption in the form of a rebate. Now that it's on the books and become fully effective as of this past summer, any future projects require extensive participation by the Housing Authority or any housing authority that might participate to create the reporting documents for the potential rebate. It becomes part of the closing with the investors, and it's a rather involved process. Our office would, if we were general counsel to any of those entities, be signing a lot of opinion letters off to the investor and potentially to CHAF if there was funding provided by the State Housing Finance Authority. So that's one thing that has changed radically in Colorado just in the last 24 months. That would affect private money, but it would also affect the more common way that most public and, quite frankly, most Indian housing authorities develop housing anymore. And that means any time in the last 15 years, as Jerry noted, HUD's really not in the business anymore of creating public landlords. They don't want to be owners of buildings. They don't want to be landlords of buildings. They don't want to have a lot of municipalities be owners or landlords. And so the vast majority of HUD's budget, very similar to what Jerry pointed out about the Innovative Housing Concepts budget is, goes to what are called vouchers. And those are rent coupons, that Section 8 program that you take out into the community and use to pay all or a portion of the rent to a private landlord. So there's no tax exemption. That landlord is still paying property taxes. There's no tax exemption involved. The federal government basically has a system for issuing coupons. Those coupons are based on another formula of what your population is and what the use is. Again, never at 100%. And then depending, as Jerry mentioned, on how the rents fluctuate, that coupon may be worth 60% of what the fair market rent of a unit is. It may be worth 80%. It may be worth 75%, depending on what the market is and depending on how much money you get from HUD every year. So if you want to fund five people at 50, that's gonna be different than funding four people at 80% of their rent burden. And that's a little dance that a lot of the local housing authorities do. How much money do we put at what income level? The balance has to be paid by the tenant. That comes out of their pocket and whatever resources they have. The only rule is, as Jerry mentioned, it can't exceed 30% of their adjusted income. That's a federal rule that comes in. The government decided in the 60s during the HUD era and the New Society that 30% sounded like a pretty good number, and nobody should have to pay more than that if you're participating in a federal program. So that's also been set by the feds. The main way that most housing authorities and Indian housing authorities develop anymore is called tax credits. And that's not a HUD program at all. When you hear taxes and credits, you think Internal Revenue Service. The single largest section of the 1986 version of the Tax Code is Title 42, and that has to do with what the Internal Revenue Service thinks a low-income housing program should look like. Which has given me and my brothers and sisters in the legal profession endless employment. It gets more and more complicated all the time. But it requires basically a couple of groups to cooperate. The idea is, there are a lot of taxpayers out there that have a large tax burden annually. The Walt Disney's, the IBMs, the large funds of money that don't want to pay taxes. And the feds say, well, we would give you a credit, but we want to direct the money. We want to direct you to give some money towards a public good, in this case, low-income housing. If you bring those in and a local housing authority agrees to add some management expertise, and you get a developer involved to work the project up, we can put together usually a limited partnership structure, which means the investors come in as the limited partner, which means they bring all the money, 99.9% of the money, but have none of the control. In other words, the point of organizing it is to provide that low-income housing. And there's nothing those big guys with the tax liability need or want to know about how to run a low-income housing project. They just want to bring their money into the project and get the tax rebate. So they're the limited partners, and then the general partner is usually a combination, either the Housing Authority by itself or the Housing Authority in conjunction with a commercial developer. They have all the control to manage the money under the program. So how do the tax credits show up? Again, the feds have a formula for that. They look at the population of the state. They look at the demographics of that population. And every year, they allocate to Colorado a certain number of tax credits. It's up to the state to come up with an allocation plan. That's done through the Housing Finance Authority in the case of Colorado. And then people put in applications. Housing authorities, developers, put in applications to get some of those tax credits. And if they're successful in getting the tax credits, they can market them on so many cents a dollar, usually somewhere between 80 and 85 cents on the dollar, I think, is the going rate. That'll be what the tax credit is worth, and the deal comes together. So you get the tax credits for free. You market them to the investors. The investors bring the money in. And the other requirement is that that property stays affordable for the long haul, which is usually 20-plus years, sometimes as much as 30-plus years. And the way that's done is you sign a land use restriction agreement, a covenant on the property that says, for the life of the investment, plus probably 10 or 15 years beyond it, we're gonna make sure that people at a certain medium level of income, and that's when we say low income, that's always set by whatever the area income is, these units will be available for them, that they'll only be marketed to and occupied by... for them, that they'll only be marketed to and occupied by people who exist at a certain income level and under those rules. The rents are subsidized in that way, but then usually more than what they would be in a public housing situation. So somebody living in a tax credit project is paying something to live there, and it's usually a percentage of what the fair market rent for that unit would be. But there's no other federal subsidy other than the structure that the IRS puts on the project. And so, that has become the major way to attract private money into development in exchange for those tax credits. That can include renovating existing public properties. That can include ground-up construction. That can include acquisition of land and/or buildings which haven't been used as public housing properties before, and they become redeveloped as public housing properties. But again, that's the trend of the government not providing the money or the units, but providing legal incentives to drive private money into investing into affordable housing and to creating that resource for communities. That's a lot of stuff we just threw at you. So I'm going to take a breath, and everybody think about it for a minute. If you have questions for me or Jerry or want to get into any more specific references.
Yeah, perhaps questions or comments regarding what's been presented so far, and then maybe we can kind of take it on to other topics. You know, I got a question about the voucher program, and you know, could you give us an idea where most of our vouchers, as far as, I don't know, percentage of cost or percentage of, I don't know how you guys couched it before. Thank you. The question was, can I get some information on the voucher program and about how much percentage-wise of the fee we're covering? You know, it sounded like there's some range there. I think you used the term 30% max of adjusted income. Where do we fall in that range?
So, when Section 8 participants first lease up, they must pay at least 30% of their adjusted income towards rent, but they can't go over 40%. So they have to find a unit that they can afford within the payment standard, and then, from the payment standard, we deduct their portion.
Dictated by how much the voucher is worth? Like, does it have a face value? I guess I don't understand exactly.
So, yeah, it's the payment standard.
How much is it?
I don't have that memorized right off the top of my head. I could provide that to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Anybody else with questions or comments, and maybe what's already been covered? Councilmember Berentone?
Since the vouchers are portable, then do we know how many people come in? Because once Englewood does their vouchers, they stick with Englewood, even if, they're still connected with Englewood even if they move out of somewhere else. I mean, they're still getting their voucher kind of based out of Englewood, correct?
Not always. So, if somebody ports out, we're called the original housing authority, and then the other housing authority is called the receiving housing authority. They have the option to administer and bill us, or they can absorb it.
It's my understanding they rarely want to absorb it. I mean, from going to a few other housing authority meetings, that usually doesn't happen because they don't want to take those on. I mean, it does happen, but the norm is, the norm is kind of that the other doesn't want to absorb that because then they can't give out more of their own vouchers because they're taking that burden on. So, because of the way the system is, regardless of how many people absorb or don't, do we really know how many people are living here under Section 8?
So, as I said in my presentation, Englewood has 309 vouchers leased right now. 48 are in unincorporated Rappahoe County. 225 are in Englewood. And 36 have ported out to other housing authorities and are administered. We have had others that poured out and get absorbed. Most of the housing authorities in the metro area are not absorbing right now because rents have really increased, but HUD funding has not. So we have the authority to do like 399 vouchers, but we only have the money for 309 vouchers. Sheridan has 160 vouchers leased. They have the authority to do 177 units, but they don't have the money. And we're working with HUD shortfall prevention team to get more money for that because we don't want to just cut people off. And HUD doesn't want us to just cut people off. So as rents have just grown dramatically, the funding hasn't. They're going to provide money through the shortfall prevention team, so we don't have to terminate those families. We don't have enough money to pay for the 160 people in Sheridan right now, even though we're authorized for 177. We don't have the funds to do that. So, of the 160, 37 are in unincorporated Rappahoe County, 105 in Sheridan, and 18 have ported to other housing authorities.
I appreciate that, but not the full answer of my question. We know where all of our voucher people are at. How many voucher people that came from Nevada or from Illinois or from Wyoming or from Denver are living here in Englewood have come over here and are still connected with their housing authorities?
So, I will have to get that number for you.
Okay.
I don't have that memorized.
Since they can port in, I mean, I appreciate that you're keeping track of the vouchers that you have put out there, but you don't really have control over anybody coming here and keeping theirs since they are portable. Right?
Correct.
Well, I'd appreciate getting that number.
Right. As long as the, as Jerry had mentioned earlier, when the voucher ports in, if it doesn't transfer directly, then Englewood has paid a management fee, but the originating housing authority still has the burden of paying for the cost of that voucher. So if they allow voucher to port in, that's not money that's coming out of Englewood's budget to do it.
Right. But it is one of our housing units, and they are residents now of our community
Right. Exactly.
under a Section 8 voucher.
Right.
And so it is possible to get a whole lot more than the 308 that were allotted, because people can come from somewhere else. And I know from going to some of the other housing authority meetings that they aren't, you know, absorbing that, at least for the metro area. And sometimes, as some of the communities are concerned as new build is going on, that you have some movement from people moving in. But I wanted to know how we kept track of that, if somebody else was doing that, if there's a management fee paid. If you can give me the system that's done under, I'm not sure how reliable it is or not reliable, but I would like to know what the system is and what you think.
Yeah. If they want the management fee, it has to be there. I'll let Jerry answer one more. I would say that, remember, on a Section 8 unit, 100% of the rent's getting paid. Some of it's being paid through the voucher. Some of it's being paid by the individual. But the only subsidy comes in the form of a voucher. So if you're a private landlord and your unit's worth $1,000 a month, and the voucher pays for 800, and the tenant pays for 200, 100% of the rent gets paid in a Section 8 situation. There's no discounting the rents.
And as far as the system to track that, it's 100% reliable. That's because we are required to pay the other housing, to bill the other housing authority for all the port-in vouchers. We bill that housing authority. They pay us, then we pay the landlords. So, that system's 100% reliable.
Maybe you could answer it quicker for me, then. So it's in your financials, then?
The dollars, but not the number of units. So I'll have to get to that.
Okay. All right.
It changes monthly, so.
And I think the concern comes from the number of units of what we're doing. So, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mayor Proton?
Thank you guys for coming. This is a simple question, and one that, when I served as liaison on the housing authority, I never heard. But when did Englewood Housing, or have they always been responsible for the city of Sheridan?
So, I started working with the Englewood Housing Authority in 2012. And at that time, we contractually managed the Sheridan Housing Authority. I'm not sure when that started. Probably at least 10 years before that.
We were general counsel to both Sheridan and Englewood at the time. And I believe the intergovernmental agreement probably dates from the mid to late '90s. There needs to be, there is an agreement in place between the two organizations as to how that management is going to go and who's going to be paid for what aspect of management.
And the reason I ask that is, we assume the Englewood Housing Authority is Englewood residents. And apparently, it's not. It's Sheridan residents as well. Are there other intergovernmental agreements with other cities?
So, we managed the Sheridan Housing Authority vouchers. Those Sheridan Housing Authority participants lease in Sheridan, or they port to other areas. So, we have the authority for Englewood or Sheridan to rent, to lease them up in their respective jurisdictions or in unincorporated Rappahoe County.
And the Sheridan Housing Authority still exists. It's simply a management agreement, right? That entity's still...
Right. They don't have the accounting system and the staff, and so we manage those vouchers for them.
So that leads to one more question. Sorry. How does Englewood Housing Authority, is there a billing system to manage that? Is there, do we receive financial benefit from doing such, or are we just straight-out managing it?
So, I don't quite understand your question.
What's the management fee?
Fee for service.
So, for the Section 8 administrative fee that's earned by the housing authority, they pay 100% of that to the Englewood Housing Authority. So, all of the administrative fee, so HUD pays us a certain amount per voucher leased up on the first of the month. And so, Sheridan's fee is 100% earned by Englewood because we manage the program for Sheridan. So, it's based on how many units are leased on the first of the month, each month. It's a different calculation every month because the number of units leased goes up and down every month.
Okay. One more clarity. What I'm trying to ask is, if Sheridan gets so much, if they get $1,000 per unit, 800, 200, however you want to split it up, and does Englewood recover any funds above that from doing the management of it? Or is it just a service we provide?
So, the way the Section 8 program works is HUD has two funding buckets. One is for housing assistance payments, and one is for administrative fee. So, the budget authority for HAP, Housing Assistance Payments, is separate, and we can lease up to the number of units that are authorized or that can be afforded under the annual budget authority. Right now, the number of units authorized is 177. The number of units leased is considerably less because we don't have the budget authority to pay for all that HAP. So, we have a fewer number of units leased up for Englewood and for Sheridan. And because we have a fewer number of units leased up on the first of the month, we have lower admin fees than we have in the past because they only pay admin fee on units leased on the first of the month. Does that answer your question?
And maybe what the total admin fee is, you know, based on how many units they have, might be helpful for us to kind of understand, are we recouping our costs? Does that make sense?
I think the key thing is, these fees are set by a HUD formula.
Sure, sure.
And any unit, whether it's a Sheridan unit or an Englewood unit, Englewood's getting 100% of whatever HUD says the cost of administering that unit is. But that's HUD's determination for what it should cost to administer the unit. And since you're taking federal funds, that's as much as you can take and pay yourself. Whatever Sheridan's getting for those units at whatever the formula says, Englewood's making 100% of that. Whether that's the true cost. Now, you asked a slightly different question. Is HUD's admin fee up to what it costs to administer a unit? That probably depends on a unit-by-unit and maybe even a month-by-month cost of administering those units. But that's what the federal government will allow you to spend.
Sure. And that's probably how we'll ultimately determine whether or not an intergovernmental agreement moving forward probably makes sense. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I guess, yeah. And I think you'd want to look at the intergovernmental agreement. Right now, if those units are in Sheridan, most of them are, you're essentially acting as a contract administrator for units in somebody else's jurisdiction and taking 100% of that cost.
And does that make sense?
So, they still have to run those units. Whatever it costs Sheridan to run those units, whatever it costs them to maintain those units, or the landlord in this instance probably is where the burden falls, to own and maintain those units. But they get the benefit of being 100% paid in rent direct from the federal government every month. So that, yeah, it probably depends on where those units are, what the alternatives are, and what the actual operational costs, which may be a function of what the private landlord is putting into the unit as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
My question is a little bit different. And my question relates to, I think you gave this information, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. So, the properties, the market-rate properties that you're investing in, where does the money come from for those, investing in those market properties and building buildings?
So, we owned some land from a long time ago.
The housing authority?
The housing authority owned some land, two parcels, and they built a triplex and a single-family house. And the single-family house, we paid for with some of our operating reserves. And the triplex, we took out a mortgage. So, we financed that one.
Okay. And are you building any more or purchasing any more market-rate?
We are trying to negotiate on a piece of property right now. It's very complex because there's several different owners. And there's a lot of issues. We can't disclose that yet. But we're negotiating to buy a piece of property. And we do have another piece of property that we're planning to build some units on.
So where did the financing come for that? From mortgaging, establishing mortgages?
So, we will probably get a mortgage from the bank and build those units. And then the other units, what we're trying to do is maybe land-bank that until construction costs come down and we can afford to build some units. Because right now, construction costs are extremely high in Colorado. What we will probably do if we build some duplexes right now is ship those in, have them manufactured in another state, brought in modular and put together on-site. Because you could get it a lot cheaper than you can by stick-building in Colorado. Both materials and labor are cheaper, like, say, in Nebraska than Colorado.
Okay. So, the buildings you would mortgage. What about the land? Where does the money come from to invest in the land?
So, we have some non-HUD reserves that we can invest. And we, right now, have that invested in a thing called CALO Trust, which does not earn a lot of money. But it's safe, it's secure, and we plan to use some of that money to buy land. Then we will get a mortgage from the bank to build the units.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
So, where did the non-HUD reserves come from? And how are, I have the financials here from the last meeting. So where are they accounted for in here?
So, we, before I came to the housing authority, there's some homeownership units, which are right next door to our office. And I think we earned some money from that. That's probably three executive directors ago or four. And so, there's those reserves. I guess, we had some property that we liquidated, and there's some money from those reserves. So, I mean, I don't have a specific accounting of all that money, but we do have some non-HUD reserves that we can spend for that.
Well, I think some of the concern comes from, and probably from HUD as well, that the money stays separate. And so, I'm kind of concerned that there isn't an accounting of where that money came from so that you can show that you're not mixing those funds in.
So, right now, most of that money is in a thing called Management Fund. If you're looking on our financial statements, MF stands for Management Fund.
I got it right in front of me.
So that's where most of that money's at right now?
It's not too, the $280,000 that you just paid for Wesley? Because you didn't, it didn't look like that got mortgaged. So I'm not sure where that came from because that was, happened in an executive session, and so we don't have the information for that. And I think that's what you're building on right now for market rate?
Well, we haven't started building anything yet, so.
Oh, I know you haven't started building, but you have paid for it?
Correct.
Right. You purchased it. So that's all I was saying was, I don't see in the Management Fund where there's $280,000. So I was just curious where you got the money, as to Councilmember Russell's question, where the money came from for the $280,000 to pay for that property?
From Management Fund reserves.
And so...
So...
I don't know where it was.
I mean, it's not in there now, yes, because we did spend the money, but it's not in there now.
So this is accurate after the sale, then? So, this is accurate after the sale then?
So, and, and we also can use some funds from Simon Center because that's a Housing Authority-owned property.
Uh-huh.
So, there's Management Fund and Simon Center.
Okay. So, is there a way to, for Councilmember Russell's question, is there a way for us to find out what all money got used to purchase the property?
Sure, I, I can provide that to you.
I do know that you purchased.
Sure. We'll provide that for you.
Okay.
And what is that reserve balance now that you have in front of you there? Did they say how much, how much is the reserve balance? Director Graber?
It is not in there.
Okay, I'll just ask him.
Okay.
We don't have a copy of the financials in front of us, but that's... Want to take a look at her copy? Is that information helpful at all or?
So, if we had the June financials, we'd have the balance sheet. We do the balance sheet quarterly. But from the investments, I could tell you what the investments are fund by fund.
I have the information that was passed out certainly to the board and that the board is making their decision on, so let me take a look and see if I have the...
While you're getting that, maybe I'll move on to further comments and questions, and we'll come back to this issue here in just a second. Councilmember Martinez?
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand something you mentioned earlier. You said there was 794 individuals on the waiting list, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And does that include units in Inglewood and Sheridan and unincorporated Rappahoe County, or is that just Inglewood?
That's Inglewood and Sheridan. So, the breakdown for Section 8, we have 286 in Inglewood and 244 in Sheridan, so that total is 530.
So, 286 on the waiting list for Inglewood?
Correct.
Okay. And then, did you also say that the waiting list closed in 2014, so no one else has been added to the waiting list since then?
Except for handicapped accessible units.
Okay. And then, do we have any options as far as helping the folks that are on the current waiting list?
Only as slots become available in the program.
So, that's our only option really, is, is if something becomes available, we reach out to the next on the list?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have July 12th, which still actually isn't even on our website, but I'm not sure I have the June with me.
No problem. Maybe we can get that information at a later date. No problem.
Well, the concern, I mean, even for the July one or the April one, the April isn't showing that kind of funding in there either, so I am, I, I am concerned about where the money is coming from, and the concern comes from the comment that you made that you can use Simon Center money and that there's some issues going on with Simon Center, and I just want to make sure that we're doing the upkeep to that facility and that we're keeping the funding separate. You said that you could go ahead and do 501(c)(3) and the LLCs to go ahead and make sure that there's a separation for the funding, but you've already have the triplex and the four units from Wesley that you're building, or at least the land that you're, you're, you're doing, and then another nine units supposedly, and then all of this is kind of happening out of reach a little of the people who pay for it, and that's the taxpayers and the people who are interested here in Inglewood who created the Housing Authority. Although, I don't know why you keep saying 1973 because I have a paper here that says '72, so I don't know what happened for that year, but I, the concern is, and the gossip has been in the issue of Simon Center money being used, and you said that there is some of it, and I'm not seeing in the financials where enough money was ever available in that Management Fund, which does take the market rate piece into it, to have ever forked over $280,000 just for the Wesley property alone. So, we really need to have that information.
We will provide the source of funds for the purchase of that property.
Thank you.
And then, if you guys are interested, they, they have disclosed, and I appreciate that, they, they do a pretty good job of disclosing what they get from Inglewood, Sheridan has always been in their financials, and all it says is the management amount, the management fee for revenue, and that's on there. But they also have their administrative costs or utility costs, and it does look, at least for the net income on the P and L, that it's showing that year-to-date, there's an $18,000 deficit. So, maybe we aren't getting the money. So, either that or if I'm reading these wrong, then maybe we'll take a look at that. But to answer your question, according to their financials, they are not recouping all of their costs. So, that might be something we need to take a look at. Either that or maybe these need to be updated I, as well. I don't know.
So, as we disclosed in the board meetings and in the board packet, we have been working with the HUD shortfall prevention team.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have not provided all the funding we need for the Sheridan vouchers. They've committed to provide that. They did a front-end load, so I, I think that's probably what you're talking about.
I'm just, it's your financial that we just got at the meeting for the Sheridan, the Inglewood, the Sheridan side for the management.
And, and as I said, we are working with the HUD shortfall prevention team to get additional funding because the annual budget authority is lacking, and HUD said, no, they do not want us to terminate assistance from the program just because they didn't fund enough, and they've committed to provide additional funding from the shortfall funding prevention team.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I mean, I understand the...
No, I'm just trying to explain to you that...
Just move on to the next issue, guys.
Yes, we do know about that, and HUD has committed to make that funding.
Oh, no, I was just trying to answer the question that you had regarding the, maybe the shortfall on there. And I just had one other question about the special limited partnership on the development participation policy here. On Section 5 of this, it says that for your policy that you would go ahead and, under consultation, that if the staff used the project favorably, the staff will consult with the City of Inglewood, Department of Housing and Neighborhood Development Services to receive timely input prior to making a decision or making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Who is, who is that that you discuss those with prior to going into a partnership with the city?
So, those were prior to my, my taking the executive director position, and I'm not sure who that would be, but I, I do know that the city did provide a letter of, of recommendation to CHAFA for their tax credits. I could try to get a copy of that from CHAFA for you if you'd like.
But no, CHAFA just came, and I thought they said we didn't give them, they don't need a letter from us. I thought this was a participation, this special limited partnership development participation was for like what you did with the Foundry or Medici, that you go ahead and partner with them, not necessarily, it's not necessary for CHAFA necessarily be involved, for the Housing Authority to go ahead and partner with somebody. I mean, you did it with Traditions, correct? I don't believe that was a CHAFA property.
Right. It's, it's not that CHAFA participates as part of the ownership structure, but CHAFA controls the tax credits in Colorado. So, if you apply to CHAFA to put tax credits into a property, you disclose to CHAFA the entire setup, and you go to the jurisdiction, in this case, the City of Inglewood, and say, we have the support of the jurisdiction to show that the application would be supported by the city government as well. And so, as, as part of the tax credit process, CHAFA must be involved because they're the awarding agency. So, they're the one saying, we need to see a letter from the City of Inglewood, we need to see the structure of the deal, we need to know who the investors are, the developers, and everything else, and then we'll evaluate your application and decide how many tax credits you get and, and where they're going to fall. So, they don't take an ownership, but they control the process of applying for and awarding the tax credit.
And I've, I've attended several of CHAFA's seminars and a couple of their meetings as well as they presented to us, and I understand the tax credit program that CHAFA is doing. What I'm actually asking about is the Inglewood Housing Authority's special limited partnership development participation policy that isn't necessarily require that it be a CHAFA property, similar to what I understand happened between the agreement between the Inglewood Housing Authority and Traditions. So, there weren't a CHAFA property, but you go ahead and make a partnership with them so that you can do part of your, part of your housing, and in that is the, the, part of the policy is that there'll be a consultation with the City of Inglewood, and I just wanted to know who they consulted with in doing that prior to making those agreements.
Well, as Jerry said, we can, if you want specific names of who in the city was notified and what they said, we'd have to look back in the closing documents. That was two or three years ago would have been when that notification came. But since Traditions was a tax credit project, CHAFA was involved. CHAFA was the awarding agency for the tax credits. We can't create, nobody else but CHAFA can, in Colorado, can award tax credits, so they had to be involved somewhere in that process, at, at least reviewing and receiving our application. Those, those, just so people don't get too confused, and it does get confusing, the allocation plans are changed annually by the state. In other words, CHAFA, when it knows that it's going to get so many tax credits, it has to show the IRS a plan that says, based on our demographics, and Colorado is a place where the demographics are changing monthly, based on our demographics, this is how we're going to structure our tax credit applications. So, for instance, they may say, we want to target, we want to give preference to so many urban projects, and so, and then we want to give some of them out to rural projects and in some of the out, outlying areas to help with that. They may say, we want to target certain neighborhoods. In other words, CHAFA has to look and see what the best way is to distribute, and then it can set quotas. It can say, we're only going to use 50% of our tax credits in what we consider the major metropolitan area. So, if you're an entity applying from that area, you've got to compete that year, and they may ask you for a lot of extra stuff. They may ask you, is your jurisdiction, is your jurisdiction in line with this? This is what we want to see. They can change those requirements every year. Most recently, we've seen, like I say, with this, with the shift to the tax exemption, suddenly what we have to provide as the local agency getting the tax credits has increased. The number, the number of certifications, the extra legwork that the Housing Authority has to do to put a housing tax credit project together has increased because of that change in the law. And that, and if CHAFA decides to change those priorities on an annual basis, each application may look a little bit different than the next.
And maybe I could interject real quick, and that is just, you know, are, are tax credit designation or CHAFA awarding that make them tax exempt from our use in property tax issues?
No.
Maybe that's where some of this confusion is coming in. Maybe you're talking about use in property?
Well, I do have just one other clarifying question. I just want to, because there's nothing in the policy that I see that limits the Inglewood Housing Authority to only CHAFA properties. If that's all you've done so far, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but nothing in here says that you are limited to only CHAFA properties in your criteria, but what I wanted to focus on, one way or the other, whether it's CHAFA or not, is that the consultation section is in there and the notification to the City of Inglewood and to any entity that's impacted prior to making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and I wanted to make sure that was happening or the policy for making that happen because it seems we've gotten stuck in a few things, a few times when we didn't seem to have that kind of notification. And I'll let you take a look at what I'm talking about.
Okay. I, I would just say, for the tax credit projects and the terminology you're reading of apply to the tax credit projects, that's in there, and, and so any place that the Housing Authority would attempt to finance with tax credits, this is, this is the policy. They may not create, for instance, we've been talking about buying a piece of property. You don't have to create a special limited partnership or any partnership at all necessarily just to make that purchase. You may, as we've said earlier, decide that because that's going to be held apart or separate from your HUD assets, you may transfer ownership to a subsidiary entity. But what the state requires, and I think this is what the point the mayor was getting at, if, if that overall development of tax credits is going to receive the benefit of the state statutory tax exemption, then a housing authority must be involved in some partnership way. But if it's just the Housing Authority buying its, you know, one property at a time, single-family units, then you're correct. There's no CHAFA involvement, the, the state, the state exemption laws apply directly through the Housing Authority's ownership of those particular properties.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, and I appreciate your sharing tonight. I, my, my understanding, well, first of all, I want to say thank you for your commitment to citizens who are in need of housing. It's, it's not always an easy time to be doing that. The housing market's gone crazy, you can get all kinds of money for all kinds of higher-end homes, but the people who are left out are the working folks, and that is a large part of who we are in Inglewood. So, I appreciate your tenacity in trying to figure out some new ways, some changes in your branding or in, in sensing who you are, the innovative, it's called innovative concepts or housing concepts, trying to think through, because when I was on, I remember we were just, our, our hands were tied all the time to try and do something new, and I think now that we know there's going to be dropping funds from HUD, I mean, lessening amounts that we receive, to be able to think innovatively is really going to be important because this housing crisis is not going to go away. If someone like Amazon does move here, it's going to be crazy. So, I appreciate that you're staying on track with that. It sounds like one of our council members is very concerned about your finances, and I don't have that same concern, but I'll bet we'll find, if you can send all those things to us. I know that we were notified as council. We, we had lots of conversations about things that we did letters for way back. If we've missed one along the way, it'd be great to find out and make sure that we get a process in place so we don't let that happen again, so I think it's good to review it. I wanted to ask you sort of a larger question then and what you're thinking because of the, the backlog of people wanting and needing housing. What, what do you think we could do together with you to help with this? Are there, are there way, and are there some strategies you're thinking of that are creative? Because HUD is going to continue to dry up, I would think, at least within the next, who knows how many, three years at least, maybe more, but i, if it does, it's, it's a new day, and we've got to think differently, and the housing crisis in this part of the state is not going to go away. Do you have any other things on the horizon you're thinking of, and could we be helpful?
Well, we have approached the city and the school board with requests of maybe being able to buy some vacant properties, and all those were pretty much turned down. And one of the properties that we pursued on Wes Wesley was formerly owned by the city, and then they sold it to somebody else, and then we bought it from that person. So, if the city has some land that they want to dispose of, it'd be nice if they would inform us, and we could potentially build some housing on that. And likewise, the school district, we've, we've approached them a couple of times. It's really hard to find places that you can build affordable housing.
Yeah, especially, yeah. So, what do you think our balance is right now in the City of Inglewood as you look at the affordability, the ratios of affordable versus unaffordable and, and the higher end? Do you have a, do you have a survey of that from your perspective?
Actually, we do.
Yeah, I thought so. That's what I was asking. A lot of claims are made, and I might make sure I have it correct.
Right. And, and to qualify, this is data from what's called the American Community Survey. This was the instrument that replaced the overall census about 10 years ago, and every year now, the census goes out and collects what they call sampling data. So, instead of doing a blanket survey, they go to five or six households in the neighborhood, get all that data, and then extrapolate it out after 30 or 40 neighbors. So, I took just the zip code, because that's how the census breaks it down, 80110, which I know is not the entire City of Inglewood, but it's a good portion of it, and they actually have now, they're up to the 2015, and this is a five-year average between, for 2015 back for five years. It takes them a few years to process the data, and this is what they call their housing profile data. So, this tells you who occupies housing in Inglewood, how many units are in the housing, whether it's multifamily, what the income levels are, what the rent burden is, and it may just be easy enough for me to pass this around. I'll leave this with the council, and you can kind of see. But in a nutshell, according to this, which I downloaded earlier this week, and granted it's as of 2015 data, you're almost evenly split between rental or homeownership. You've got a whole lot of people who haven't been here more than five to eight years. About half of them are paying 30% or more for most of their housing costs, and that means they're prob, they're, those are, obviously, aren't the people in the subsidized program because if you're out there and you want to mortgage yourself to the hilt, you can mortgage yourself to the hilt. There's no control over that. And then it makes some other predictions and trends. You can go to the same site and download an economic report to see where your, are these people with long-term jobs, short-term jobs, what your hourly wage is, what your family income is, what your household income is, and kind of pair them up, and that's what the, what the point is. But, so, see, right now, Littleton seems to be, or, sorry. But so, see, right now, Littleton seems to be, or, sorry, Inglewood seems to be a, a city with, with a lot of new people coming in. You've got the older population, but you seem to be, what, what, what is happening a lot in the metro area and that we hear is that there's, there's a huge amount of rental housing, which obviously for the long term is not necessarily what you want. You, you want to have some, probably a, maybe 75% homeownership, 25% rental, if you're looking for a strong tax base and a strong resident base and things like that. So it's, it's data like this the city and the housing authority could pull together and say, look, we've, it says we have this population of folks. Are we serving that population of folks as much as we could? Or if we, if we found out that in order to push people into homeownership, has been done in the past in Arapahoe County by the Arapahoe County Housing Authority, we want to take some money and create a homeownership incubator. We give them a six-week class in finances. If they complete that, we give them $5,000, $10,000 towards down payment if they can go out to, and get their own private mortgage. And you create a homeownership family, and you hold that as what's called a soft second mortgage, that $5,000 or $10,000 that eventually deteriorates if they stay in the house five or 10 years. You've created a homeownership family. You don't need to collect that money back. So you're asking what can be done to, if, if there's homeowner available, that's another way, just recently, that Arapahoe County has chosen to create some homeownership opportunities is to, is to say, if we, if you, if you're a working family and you just need that little push to get that money, you can't quite save up the down payment, or your finances aren't quite right, you need to get your credit corrected. That's skills and information that folks like the housing authority can pass out, and then maybe a little help to get them to that next step into a private mortgage and purchasing a home.
Could I just request, even with my glasses, I can't read this. So if you, would you be able to send this on to council?
Absolutely. I mean, the website might be actually be out there. It's, if you search the American Community Survey, you can print all of this stuff. But I'd be happy, that's the format they printed out.
No, no, I didn't think you did that.
Thank you. You know, I would like to maybe, I know we're a little bit, you know, maybe behind, I feel like, on trying to identify or talk about a few other issues. And I, first of all, I just want to thank you all for being down here. I want to thank the board for their service. I appreciate the willingness to sort of work with the city. I feel like we need to improve our communications between our two bodies. You know, I wanted to thank Director and some board members for, for being willing to meet with me to sort of begin to, I think, improve some of those communications and the relationships between our bodies. You know, I think we identified a whole host of issues that I'd like to kind of get through. You know, one of those was the name change. I think you guys provided some rationale for that, so thank you for that. You know, maybe one of the other issues maybe I can move us on to is, you know, perhaps what Councilmember Barrentine might have been getting to, but I'm, I'm a little bit unclear. But is there, maybe the question might be, is there a policy on getting council feedback on use or property tax deals with affordable housing projects and developers who come to town?
Well, that's what she's provided. This, this was set up when, when, when the tax credit deals got, and this was based on the 2001 amendment to the statute where this, the, the, this is where Colorado made it a little sweeter for developers by just getting them, if you put a minimal interest of the housing authority in the ownership structure, you could have long-term exemption just from the property taxes. Of course, the, the most reason amendment is taking a step further. You get ad valorem taxes during construction. And so that was the intent when this policy was put together, is have a structure for evaluating those projects, deciding whether they made sense for Inglewood. And then, as, as you've pointed out, if we're going to participate, we need to get to the city and inform them. And, and this one specifically centers around that part of the, the Colorado tax exemption statute. So again, participating in a tax credit-style project, that, that, that's what this would require, is, is to bring that project to the city when it was at a certain point and make a recommendation. And if necessary, get the city's concurrence and approval for the, if the tax credit component was there. And I, and I believe that it's the intent, you know, we haven't seen anything different from our office, of the housing authority to continue to do that even now that we've got that second level, which is the ad valorem tax exemption, which has just gone into effect. But certainly 15 years ago, they knew they had to work with the city on the, just the basic property tax exemptions.
And has that happened on all of the recent, you know, deals?
As far as we know. I mean, there, our office has closed the tax credit deals, and you guys don't get the tax credits without having gone through that process. So the, the last two, the Broadway Lofts and the Foundry are the last two projects, I think.
Because I know we cooperated in sending a recommendation letter, you know, to CHAFA saying, hey, we support this type of development here in the city. But I feel like we let, were left out of this loop on, and maybe this is unfair, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Keck, is that we didn't feel like we were on the loop on the property tax question. And I guess that's what I was trying to distinguish between. Can you help me out with that? I mean, thoughts on that?
What, what, what would make sense for the city? What information, I mean, this is...
Do you think the city has a role in that decision?
Well, sure. And I think that's why the housing authority put this policy together, say, we're about to come in, put up a project, bring some more residents here, or help some residents that are already here. It's going to take this property, either that property is already off the tax rules, because it's an existing housing authority project that needs to be renovated. Or I believe in this case, at least one of the projects was redeveloping some of the industrial property up north. And to say, we've got a developer who's willing to come in, take on that burden, put up some new residences, but in exchange, they want to involve us as the tax exemption. And, and for that exchange, and what this part of the statute says is that, that part of the, part of the project that's, that has to be set aside, there may be a mixed-use project, but part of it has to be set aside for a set number of people who would then be at that 80% of area mid-income, which is the affordable standard that, that gets set up. And so I think that's exactly the intent, is to let the city know that's what's going to happen, and there's going to be a new project there, and there's going to be new residents there, and this is the situation.
And they're going to be property tax exempt.
Right. That, that's the assumption, is that, that's what this, I don't, I don't know.
And maybe that's where we, and maybe that assumption is maybe where we got disconnected, you know?
Well, I mean, that's the, as far as this policy goes, and I, I know not everybody at the table's seen it, it actually starts by reciting the tax exempt statute in Colorado and says, this is the reason this policy's in place, is housing authority knows it's about to develop under one of these projects. It's going to take all these steps to evaluate the project and bring that information to the city at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Director?
And going forward, could we ask, what would that look like in a perfect world? What kind of notice or involvement does the city want in that type of thing? Who would we work with?
You know, maybe I could turn it over to Manager Keck for a moment and ask him to comment on your thoughts on how you think that process went, and maybe feedback on best practices moving forward so that we can avoid some of that confusion.
Do you indulge me in just one second?
Sorry, we're going to Manager Keck right now, if you don't mind, please.
How has that looked before?
We're going to Manager Keck, please.
I just want, I wanted to ask.
We're going to Manager Keck, please.
I want to ask a clarifying question. If you could please ask how that's looked so far, what kind of notification they've done so far?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, yeah, I think here to...
I'm trying to control this meeting and move it forward, so if you'd just let me do that, I would appreciate it.
Herefore, what, what has happened is that the individual developer has approached us and elicited from us a letter, or solicited from us a letter to CHAFA in support of the particular project. And I think that the city has known that these particular projects were going to be tax exempt. I think where we were caught off guard was the change in the law with respect to the, as you mentioned, the ad valorem taxes. And, and I think that's what really, really caught us unaware, because again, we, we had budgeted for those, that, that, that use tax in the, in the budget to help with surrounding capital projects. And when that doesn't come in, that, that was a little bit deleterious to us, and we're having to pull money out of our other projects to help fund that. I think in the future, what would be helpful is to know when that nexus happens, when that, at least at the staff level, either through community development or my office, so that then I can come and figure out, how do we approach the council without slowing down the work that you're doing? But just to make the council aware that, hey, this particular project is coming. Here is the scope and magnitude of the project. And I think that the most difficult thing for us to understand as staff was, it seems like it's such a small investment. $100 ownership, you know, obviates or eliminates the ability for the city to, to receive, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in use tax. And we didn't know that, that was coming. And I think in the past, we haven't had communication between the, the housing authority or, and the city on projects of this nature. And so having that dialogue now to say, we are interested in that, is extremely helpful.
Well, and, and I think that Inglewood could say the same thing, the housing, from the housing authority side. The presentation, the application, everything, by the time this was even signed into law at the beginning of, in January, and then, and then became a law this last summer, this deal was underway. So there wasn't, aside from, I guess, the best that any of us could have done, maybe looking at the attorneys and saying, guess what, there's a bill in the legislature proposing to do X. And if we can extrapolate out all those dates, this might happen on these projects. If that had been a feature of the project at the beginning, you surely would have known about it as the city. And the only thing I can think of that would have happened differently is, is I know the housing authority, the same developer who made the presentation to you, it wasn't until the end of the project, the closing, and I said, you know, I got one of those legislative bulletins that said, guess what the new laws are this year. I turned around, I said, did you know this was going to happen? He says, yeah, I think we're going to apply for this. So that probably would have been, not realizing what information the city had, that would have been an opportunity in this situation for, for us to inform the city. What any of us could have done about it at that point, I don't, I don't know. The good news is unless, unless these laws are going to keep changing every two years, we should know going in from here on out. And there aren't any more projects currently, that doesn't say there won't be later this year, but there's, we're not in a current round of tax credit applications. We're not in a current development. But that would become, just like this policy went in in 2001, I believe that would become part of the policies to say, you're right, it's a bigger hit. I would say, it's $100, not in exchange for the tax base. It's $100 in exchange for getting a nice new housing project and a lot of tax-paying citizens.
Understood, yeah.
But I understand the way it looks when you've already done your pro formas and you expect this to go, because that's the way the letter of intent on the deal would have read, too.
Does that help answer the question that you had, or?
Can we come back just to, you know, just a moment here? And, you know, I, I think part of that is obviously our own due diligence and, you know, knowing what's impacting us as, as an organization. So I appreciate some of that information. I think one of the other issues we identified was recent purchases and how that is being approved in meetings. And, you know, you know, there was some suggestion that maybe we should approve the contract. Any thoughts on that?
So that, we will put that on our next board agenda for ratification of that contract?
Of the Wesley purchase?
Correct.
Thank you. Also, you know, I appreciate your guys' efforts regarding how you guys are handling requests for information. I understand now we've got a form that the public or anybody can fill out and, and get the information from the housing authority. Do we feel like we're in a good spot on requests for information from your organization as far as procedure of handle, handle those requests?
I think we established that form and that procedure in 2012. And I think we've done a good job of complying to that.
Do we have any issues with the format of that? I feel like we were discussing some of that. Are we generally okay with how that is being handled moving forward? Maybe from our city attorney's office?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a couple of meetings with Director Graber, and we've been discussing a few just problems that have cropped up into the process and working hard to figure out what those are and to alleviate those going into the future, so.
Got it. Thank you.
So I think that's probably the best answer I've got, is we're working on it.
Okay. But we identified some issues. Is that fair to say, or no?
Yeah, that's fair to say.
Thank you. And has that information or those issues been communicated to your office?
They have.
Thank you. And so maybe we can pick up this issue later and see kind of how we resolve some of those. I know, I appreciate your efforts with some of the exec session issues. I know we talked a little bit about executive sessions. You know, are we going to disclose the state statute and the purpose of the executive session on the agendas moving forward?
Going forward, we will.
Thank you. We talked about the market rate deals, and I appreciate your guys' , you know, explaining some of the rationale and how that works, and, you know, why that makes sense for you folks. You know, I know that, you know, there was some pursuit of outside-city assets. Is that still on the agenda for you folks, or is that not, no longer being pursued?
So the City of Sheridan, in Sheridan Housing Authority, has some reserves. And they have asked Inglewood Housing Authority to partner with them, to maybe do, do some housing in Sheridan. And if an opportunity arises, we may consider that.
Would you come for council feedback on any of that partnership with Sheridan Housing Authority?
Well, a lot of times the deals like that are like, time is of the essence. And I, I don't know. It depends on what the deal is. We might have to disclose it after. Sometimes negotiations need to be done quickly. So I don't know. Does, does council want to know every partnership that we do?
I would like to be informed. If we go outside and we start purchasing assets outside of the City of Inglewood, I would certainly like to be informed. I don't know how the rest of the council is, feels about that, but, you know, perhaps that's something we could discuss. But, you know, right now, all of our assets are in the City of Inglewood, correct?
Correct.
Do anybody else maybe want to weigh in on that issue? I mean, in my mind, what's that? Okay. Any other, anybody want to weigh in on that one?
Yeah, I, I think we should look at the pros and cons. What are we looking at? And what is the obstacle? I don't want to throw obstacles in their way if they're trying to find great housing for affordable rates to help our citizens. And so, I mean, if we're going to, I don't want to throw a wrench in that. I don't want anything to be done, you know, in a, in a way that's unscored in that process. So if there's trust that we have to develop here, then maybe we find out a different way to go about this. But I would rather talk about what were the pros and cons of that. It might be, it's no big deal. We can do it. I don't know.
And I certainly can think there's some good rationale there. Go ahead.
Personally, I think if we address the open meetings issue, I think we have land deals. I mean, I just heard you say that going forward, we will address that. I'm concerned about land purchases that have been done in executive session prior to this, perhaps not being legal. If we're not following the open meetings law, that is creating most of the problems that are existing here, I believe.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in on the assets outside of the city limits? Sir?
I'm kind of with Linda on this. I, I would love to see you guys get more assets. I just think that we'd like to be involved in that, at least, at least know. I think our concern is we wouldn't want to see, you know, you get into something that harms the, you know, the authority with getting into debt that's unrecoverable. So that would be the only reason is that, because Inglewood would, you know, our residents would probably be asked to help do something on that. And I just think openness, a bilateral openness agreement is kind of important to us. And that'll lead to my question when it comes to me.
Thank you. I think that's all I had. I do want to turn it back over to Councilmember Barrentine. She's been very patient.
As far as weighing in on the assets, this is an asset of the community set up by us. Of course, we want to know on all of what's going on with this organization that we set up to go ahead and address the, this problem. The partnerships, while I appreciate that we ought to be diligent in looking at all of the legislation that's coming through, I think it's a little unfair that we should have just assumed that when a law comes through, that there's going to go ahead and be some partnership that you, as the Inglewood Housing Authority, go, go ahead and do with the developer. It was after the law that they applied. That was after, after June. I mean, they knew this was coming forward. They made an application after the fact. And in that application was when you were notified that they were going to do it as well. You couldn't just assume that just because the law went through, they were going to. They actually had to take an action and fill out an application. And when they do that application, I believe that per your policy, that's when we should be notified. And we were not. And I mean, the concept of constantly saying, I can't unring the bell. But we've been trying to communicate for the last year now, as these surprises happened to us. And we found out from the assessor's office that these were tax-exempt properties and that these deals had been made on these three properties. You're right, we may not be able to unring the bell on that, but it keeps happening. We kept having problems with executive sessions and open meetings and not recording. And in June, during an executive session, a property was purchased, and that violates the open meetings law. And it was my understanding you'd been advised to ratify that purchase, that that put that purchase in jeopardy for being a legal purchase. And yet it has still not happened to ratify that. And you say, well, we're gonna. And it's not going to happen maybe till October. And the, the concern about it happened right at the time that that happened. The very next minutes it came out that stated that a property had been purchased in an executive session with no information on the amount or where the property was or, or what was going on. And then it was my understanding that you guys were advised that we were concerned about that. And we are still here in September, and that property has not been ratified yet by a vote of the, an open public vote. And the public in this community, we have a right to know. And the public in this community, we have a right to know what's going on in that Housing Authority. These are, it's taxpayer money, it's open, it's, you guys are required under that law. And I'm concerned that we're in September and it still hasn't happened. And the, and that, that means that there's still a concern with the open meetings and the executive sessions. We still have a concern. If we identify a problem and we say, this is an issue, and it keeps happening, I'm not sure where we end up with confidence to know that next month is when it's gonna be done. The finances and the mixing of finances have been, has been a huge concern, especially for the people living in those, in our Simon Center and Orchard Place. And the stability of this Housing Authority, as for the financial information, I mean, we realize that there's shortfalls, and we wanna try to make sure that we're supporting it. But at the same time, when we see $280,000 going out for market rate, which makes it look like our Housing Authority is becoming just another management company of property, and that's not your, your job for the community. That's their concern, is that it's supposed to be low income, and the switch over to market rate to try and subsidize the low-income property becomes a competitive, looks like you're competing with the market rate, and that causes a, a huge concern on how this is being managed and what we're, on what we're, on what we're doing. I'd like the market rate people, some are concerned that the market rate people should be handling market rate, and our Inglewood Housing Authority should be handling low-income housing. And the two are getting all mixed up here. I was concerned when I asked for the financial information, and that we're mixing funds, and that you are not clear, nor is the financial statement, information that's being provided to the board, clear, and where you're getting this money for these purchases. For the other, when you said that a lot of this has to happen quickly in negotiations, this council is very well aware of that. When we negotiate for property, and we do, or a contract, we realize that that can be a dicey situation, trying to do that in executive session, and still follow the open meetings law, and make sure that we are being open and transparent with taxpayers' dollars, and we have an obligation to do that. So, it can be done, we do it. And I would like to see the Housing Authority come into compliance with those laws. You cannot just say that just because it's difficult to negotiate a property, that you can purchase a property without that notification and that vote. That's the law. So, I'm concerned when you're, I'm concerned about how we're gonna move forward with this, since it seems to be, I'm not sure I got the commitment yet, and I'm just concerned about it.
Thank you, Mayor Berantine.
Thank you. I'm a change subject, just a hair. I'm actually gonna address our chair with the same question, I'm gonna address you folks. You know, as, as a chair, you know that this council appoints your board. And that's our responsibility, the Inglewood Housing Authorities, to, to appoint the board. And my question to you is, what does the board feel their obligation is to this council? And I'm gonna ask you guys the same thing. What do you feel, as a Housing Authority, your relationship should be to the, to the city of Inglewood? Because there seems to be a feeling that, from the, some of the board, past board members, is that, you know, y'all don't need to be involved in our business. Kinda seems to be this wall. I remember when I came on as liaison, as soon as it was announced, the chair called me up and says, what is your intention of coming on our board? You know, as if I had some intention other than just being notified. There seems to be, I don't know, some, so I'd like to ask the chair first, what do you think your responsibility for, to the, to the board is and to council?
Our vice chair's here tonight, thank you.
So, I'm not the chair anymore, I'm the vice chair.
Well, I give you a promotion.
So, I've been actually on the Housing Authorities since 2008, and so I have quite a bit of history and worked with quite a, quite a few council liaisons. And we've always had, at least during my tenure, most of my tenure, we've always had a great relationship with council liaisons, and it was a relationship of give and take. They were much very involved in our discussions and offered great input and suggestions, and were always very supportive of our mission, and, you know, developing affordable housing, expanding affordable housing in the community. I think just recently, maybe we've had a difference of opinion or what have you. I think it's easier. I get the sense that some folks on the council might not support affordable housing in the community, or development of affordable housing, or development period in the community. So, it makes it very difficult when you're approaching our commission very adversely. So, I think you probably get what you give in some instances. I don't know if I have. And I guess in, in responding to some of, some of the other comments, I think, you know, with respect to the tax credit projects that we've been a partner in, they were definitely blessed by the city, right? I mean, one is the Broadway Lofts, which is an urban renewal authority-sponsored project. And in some of those cases, without the Housing Authority's involvement, those projects weren't able to proceed, 'cause in these tax credit projects, there's always a gap in financing, you always have a capital stack. And so, with our partnership, we were able to fill that gap in the partnership, or in the, in the capital stack. So, but for the, the Housing Authority's participation, those projects might not even, you know, we might not have the Foundry, we might not have the Traditions, or Broadway Lofts. And in my opinion, those are all great assets to the community. I think the Traditions is fully leased, at least phase one is. Phase two might be close to being leased. The Foundry, they just have the breaking, open house, and it's a beautiful facility. The Broadway Lofts, that's gonna revitalize, you know, downtown Inglewood. It's, it's a great asset, at least in my opinion. So, I, I mean, I think the Housing Authority is doing great things, and we definitely wanna partner with the city. We have a history of partnering with the city. And I just think it's been very difficult recently to do that. But, we would, we're here, we're open, we're available for communication. All our financials are audited every year. We never failed an audit since I've been on the board. We have, we pass our budget every December. You know, that's fully available, it's always been available to the council members that are, serve as our liaison. There's opportunity to discuss the financials, ask any questions. You know, we've never had an issue with co-mingling of funds. I mean, believe me, if, if we had an issue with co-mingling of funds or whatnot, HUD would let us know, and they would probably take the money, 'cause, you know, they're hurting right now for money. Can we improve in something? Sure. Are we willing to improve? Yes. But I think it just has to be a positive relationship, and, you know, I don't know. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Is there, did I answer your question, or?
Just, just the final part of that, is how do you think the board should respond back to this council? Or do you think there's any responsibility at all?
Um, I think with respect to, if we're doing a development project, obviously, I think there should be some, there should be communication, there should be, you know, a partnership there. And we've always had that partnership with the city, like with this, the, what's it called? The vendor, sales, sales tax?
Sales and use tax.
Sales and use tax. Like, that was as big a surprise to us as it was to you guys. I didn't even know anything about it until we met with Eric and Allison in June or July, and I didn't, we didn't even know anything about it. And that certainly wasn't presented to us or on our radar when we were evaluating the project and, you know, entering into the partnership agreements and whatnot. And I think, in fact, in some of those partnership agreements, like, we've insisted with developers that, hey, you need, even though they're not required to, hey, you need to pay a pilot, because you're, I mean, maybe that doesn't affect the city as much as the school board, maybe, but you're taking taxes, you know, off the, off the roll, so you need to pay a payment in lieu of taxes. Or we've negotiated things to make the projects better. Like, for the Foundry, I forget what we negotiated, but, you know, we negotiated certain things the developer maybe needs to take a cut in the fee in order to, developer fee, which is what they get as part of the tax credit project, in order to, you know, make the facility better for the residents, or, as an example. So...
Traditions as well, you did that.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I think we've, in the past, we've always had an interest in looking out for the city, and have been conscious about, you know, what our participation in a project does in terms of, you know, taking, letting a developer forego payment of real estate taxes or whatnot. And I think in terms of the developer going back and getting the sales and use tax waived, I mean, that's pursuant to statute, from what I'm hearing. I mean, that really had nothing, we didn't tell the developer, hey, you can go, you know, take advantage of this law, or what have you. So, but, yeah, I think, you know, I, it'd be great if we could partner. It'd be great if we could partner in, you know, development. Obviously, a developer of a tax credit project is coming to the city, probably coming to the city before they even come to us, right? Or maybe they're doing it jointly. You know, the city's reviewing the project, the city's reviewing the application, 'cause, like, I think it was mentioned before, CHAFA requires, or it's looked favorably, favorably upon, for a tax credit award to get a recommendation or support from the city. So, the city's definitely involved in these projects, or, you know, has been in the past. I don't think there's anything on the radar. I don't think, you know, any project in Inglewood got any tax credit awards for this year. But...
And just to be clear, Mayor Penn signed the last two letters. His council agreed to write a letter of support for those projects. So, we, we were involved in that with a letter that we discussed, council in open session, and even though it wasn't 100% agreed upon to do that, it was done. And so, just wanna, that's on the record as well, that we did participate. And I'd like to, you gentlemen, to answer the same thing. What do you think your responsibility back to this council or to the city is?
Well, and we like having an open relationship with the city. We've developed, I think, a good relationship with the mayor, the city attorney, and the city manager. We've really been able to learn a lot from them, and we, we welcome their participation. As far as council, I don't know that we'll be attending all of your council meetings, but you're welcome to attend ours. And we've had representation from the city council at our meetings, and it's an open meeting, you're welcome to come. We don't have as nice of a facility for our meetings as you do, but you're welcome to come on down. And we...
And you guys got the recording fixed, right? The, the issue of recording the meetings?
So, yes, we've, we don't have fancy video stuff, but we do have an audiotape recorder, and we record those meetings. We don't, it's real hard for us, being a small agency as we are, to update our website every day, all that type of stuff. So, we try to keep our website up to date as much as possible with things we need to communicate to the general public, but we don't put those recordings on there. That's, right now, we don't, we don't have an IT person in, in-house. So, I wish we had all this, the capabilities that the city does, but we're a very small agency, 14 employees total. So...
Mr. Graber, thank you again for coming, and vice chair, thank you.
And I thank the city for working and reaching out with us and helping us to learn what are the requirements of some of the open records laws, and we will comply, and we will, going forward, do our best. We're not trying to hide anything, we try to be open and above-board. We, we might still partner with the city of Sheridan, they're really open to developing additional housing over there, and they have some funds. And I think sometimes it's good to partner with other agencies. We looked at doing a partnership with Littleton Housing Authority, but that did not work, or South Metro Housing Options, as they're called now, but that didn't work out. But, we, we are open to partnering, and we want to be open and above-board in all our dealings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I actually would like to address a couple of things that have been shared about certain council members not being concerned about affordable housing. The truth is, I am very concerned. I've been attending the meetings for several months now, and, but one of my big concerns is that it seems to me, just from sitting in the back and observing, that there is this push for more development and more properties, and making sure you diversify and go different directions. My greatest concern is it is at the expense of current residents. I don't think that the board, the Inglewood Housing Authority Board, has any connection other than one liaison from Orchard Place with what's going on in those units. And I'm very concerned about the deferred maintenance. I'm concerned that the maintenance person said, I can't do those things because the budget is tight. They took out a ramp behind Simon Center over a year ago, and I know that the elevator just got done. The elevator was poorly designed because most of the cycle units that would go in there are not going to be able to use that. For over a year, wheelchair-accessible people have only had one entrance into that building. The other problem is both of the elevators are in trouble, and they're breaking down all the time. The wheelchair, the people in wheelchairs are afraid to go on the elevators because they're gonna get stuck in there. And then, I know that at least twice in the last few months, that the trash bins have plugged up. The residents complained to management, it didn't get taken care of for a week, it stunk in the building. And finally, one of the residents crawled in the chute to push that down. That is not keeping safe, decent, affordable housing. And those people over there are very concerned that you're gonna sell the public housing. They are in the dark. And my greatest concern is that the movement is towards getting a lot of new properties and helping a lot more people. We need to take care of the people we have. And it is very, it upsets me so much that people that are poor and don't have anything don't have a voice. And I'm very concerned about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Berantine. We'd like to try to wrap us up before rate here.
I would echo what Councilmember Russell said. Facts don't have feelings, but this situation can get very emotional. You have a lot of people that are at risk, that believe that they're in a situation where they don't necessarily feel comfortable to have a voice, and when they come to us and say there's a problem, they expect us to advocate for them, and I will. And I, and I do, and I've had a concern for the last two years, actually, a little more than that. Two years ago, we couldn't get the minutes to the city here from your meetings to be posted, so the people knew what were, what was going on. It's been adversarial, and I, and I really don't understand why. There's been comments made that your board is separate from the city, and therefore isn't required to do things under the open meetings law, or the sunshine law, transparency. And it's been, it's been a little bit like pulling teeth, and I don't understand why. The strides that we've made, I would like to keep going with that, but we still don't have recordings. You, you have a recording of your meeting. Once you have a recording of your meeting, our boards and commissions supply their recording to the city. You don't need an IT person, give us the recording. Let us put it on there, so that we have open, transparent information available to our constituency, so they know what you're doing with their tax dollars, whether it's federal tax dollars, state CHAFA money, or local. We partnered with you, we created you, and we have an obligation to make sure that that information is available to our constituency, and it hasn't been. And there's been a huge pushback, and I hope that that stops. CHAFA and EHA partnership are two different things. Just because we've been talking to CHAFA in no way, shape, or form, meant that we knew that you were gonna do a partnership with them. And the but-for argument doesn't hold water, considering the attorney just stated that that law came into effect after these two major projects were done. And then they said, well, sure, now that it's done, we're gonna go ahead and apply for this. So, they didn't need those to do them, they were finished. They were already close to completion by the time that you guys made that. So, they were gonna go through whether or not this is, while EHA and urban renewal have some similarities in their setup, the but-for argument doesn't... in their setup, the but-for argument doesn't work. And CHAFA can go ahead and do a project with somebody without the Inglewood Housing Authority ponying up this partnership and giving them that additional tax credit on there. The reasons that affordable housing have come under even more scrutiny and more concern over the financials is that HUD can account for billions of dollars. They're in trouble because they've gotten money and they can't account for it. So now more people are looking at HUD and saying, "We need to make sure that these housing authorities are accountable and that they're financially responsible and that they're transparent so that we can keep you accountable." The, and it's not that somebody's against affordable housing, and I think that's a spurious argument to make, and it's a little, it's unfair and a little cruel, because we do a lot of work trying to make sure that we're accountable to our constituency and that we can show that we're using the money as wise as possible. What I would like to ask the Housing Authority, then, is to go ahead and provide the recordings for meetings, as you've been requested, to make sure that we have the meeting material prior to the meeting and the agenda, and that afterwards that we have the minutes and the documentation available to the, to the public. And that you just send that to the city. I'm pretty sure that our city manager would like to go ahead and help you in whatever way, if you can't figure out how to get the recording onto our website, that we could go ahead and make sure that that happens. And that we get the financial records so that when people are concerned that there is a mixing of any funds or where this funding is coming from, to make these purchases, and what's going on with the money from Simon Center or Orchard Place, or whether it's being mixed by properties, that we have the, they can go and look at the financial information themselves and either be upset at what's going on or be happy that they can get the information and that everything's upfront. So I'd like at least a commitment that those will be done.
Thank you. I...
And if I could just get my paper...
Were you trying to get a response, or did you...
Yes, I was.
Okay. Any response to Councilmember Berentine on the, on those requests?
Thank you.
I think the Housing Authority wants to be as responsive as possible, and they're going to look at making sure that all of those requests can be met to the extent that they're not disclosing anything that hasn't been approved or something else. I mean, you know, putting, putting fully recorded meetings out there is not something we're used to. It's not that we don't want you to hear that stuff, but if it's going to go on the internet, that probably means they, that the board needs to be very strict about how it's running its meetings and what content is there. And certainly, we are open to sharing as much information as possible as we can with the city council, with your constituents. We're serving the same population. Our client base are the same people. The Housing Authority, regardless of what money it's using and regardless of what it does, its mission is to provide affordable housing. And last thing, I would say, market rate doesn't mean it's not affordable housing. And that's, that's another means to provide an opportunity for affordable housing for a certain segment of the population. And so it's not done in exclusion, and it's not intended to be done in exclusion. They're still subject to the same mandate that they've had from the city from the beginning, which is to create those affordable housing opportunities for the citizens of Inglewood. And they want to keep doing that with your help and your cooperation.
Thank you. I appreciate you folks coming down. I think this, you know, as difficult as some of these conversations, I think, tonight were, this is a good first step, I think, to identifying some of these issues that hopefully we can sort of move forward on. I know that there was a lot of information kind of coming from both ways, and so my thought is maybe let's take a moment to digest some of those and maybe understand what we're trying to tell each other a little bit. I do feel like this issue of outside-city boundaries is an issue for me. And I do feel like, you know, we heard some members saying, "Hey, maybe that makes sense." And so maybe our next conversation can surround that a little bit and why that makes sense for you, and try to help us understand that. I guess I worry that if you guys do a deal like that, and then we don't like it, and there's no communication between now and then, that, you know, we don't get the benefit of that rationale that might make sense. And, you know, in some of my private conversations, I think I've, I've heard some of that. But I do think the council needs the benefit of some of that conversation. So, and I know we're a little over time, so I don't necessarily want to go there right this moment, but just perhaps as a item for our next discussion. Councilmember Wilson?
You have just one last request, because a lot of claims were made tonight about maintenance issues and stuff like that. Could you maybe forward on to us some of the concerns that you've been hearing and addressing? Because I know sometimes it might just be one person, it might be a lot of people. But if you're not hearing these things, we certainly want to be able to, I haven't heard anything, but, but if we are, that you get the information in a timely manner that helps you to address whatever it is.
And tonight is the first that I've heard that the trash chute was plugged up?
That happens a lot. I know when I was over that area, people would say things to one or two people, and then no one else on your staff knew that something needed to be done. So maybe, maybe there's some way we can have, so like if she hears from someone, you hear from somebody, that we have a quick turnaround, just like our council requests, that it gets to you. Because for some reason or another, some people sometimes just like to complain to other people, and then they don't know, or they, maybe they think they've said something to someone on your staff, but, but really it wasn't clear. So we could help in that as well.
And we do have a process. It's called a work order system, that if people have maintenance requests, they're supposed to put in a work order. And if they don't ever put in a work order, there's no way for us to follow that up.
Like that in my office, too.
So we've asked them not to talk to a maintenance guy who might be on his way to a unit to unclog some plumbing, or to fix a plumbing leak, or to stop an emergency electrical problem, and might forget about that, to please work, use the work order system that we've established, and call those number, call those work orders in. And that's the process. And if they're not following that, then it's hard for us to know, especially if they tell 10 different people, but they don't tell us.
As a commissioner, I mean, definitely I want to know issues like that. So thanks for bringing that up tonight. And like you suggested, Linda, I think that'd be great if we had a process where something is brought to you, because it's not necessarily brought to us. But I just wanted to note that, you know, since I've been on the board, the Housing Authority's always been a high performer, which is the highest category in HUD system. And also, we have these REAC inspections. Are they, every year, Jerry? Are they, how often?
They're usually every other year, or sometimes they're going to be every three years.
So every other year, every three years. I think the better-performing housing authorities don't have them as often. But these are pretty intensive inspections for both our public housing and Section 8 project base, which is Simon Center, where they're looking for the smallest of things, such as a crack in a light out, in a outlet cover. You get knocks for those. You get points. And since I've been there, we've never gone below a ninety, a ninety a score in terms of our facilities. So, you know, our maintenance staff does a great job. And our, just, I think our whole staff does a great job with, you know, we're a small authority and with what they have to deal with in terms of maintaining the buildings, working with some of our residents who might have other issues going on. I think, you know, they just do a great job.
Councilmember Russell?
Can I just ask, like, on the work order system, if there's an emergency, like, I mean, I think the trash chute getting backed up is probably an emergency. And when it was shared with me that somebody finally already fixed it, or they crawled in, that is a huge safety issue. If somebody gets hurt, if a resident gets hurt, fixing a problem like that. But, so, on the work order system, if they call the office, or do they have to go over to the office?
They don't have to go over. We have an emergency call number. We have somebody on-call 24/7. So I, I mean, without knowing when it happened and what happened, it's hard to address those kind of ominous things out there.
Right, exactly. And I understand that.
And we would never condone a resident going down a trash chute. No. We wouldn't recommend a staff person do that. There are other ways to, to remove the trash out of a chute. We do have residents that want to go in the trash room, and they, they want to sweep up, and they want to do everything in the building. And it's like, no, please leave that alone. Our maintenance guys do that because we don't have workers comp for residents to go in the trash room and sweep up, or, you know. We have some busy-bosie, busy-body residents that do things that they shouldn't be doing. And it's like, one person in the past took it upon themselves to remove a Christmas tree that the residents put up because they just didn't think it should be there. So we have a lot of those types of issues, and without knowing the specifics, it's hard to give an answer to a vague ominous type of question. But we have a system. We have on-call. We have 24/7 coverage, so...
Okay. Well, and I just wanted to, you know, make certain of the policy of how to do that. And the truth is, I, at the last meeting, I did sign up to speak, and then the meeting just kind of went on. But next time I sign up to speak, I will interrupt if, because public comment wasn't called for. But anyway, I just, you know, so if somebody comes to me, then I'll know where to send them. So are all those policies given to all the residents, so they are aware of them?
They are. They have refrigerator magnets with the phone numbers on them. Does that mean they use them or follow them? No.
We have similar issues citywide, sir, so we know how that goes. You know, thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate this conversation, and we will be in communication. I know that, I had asked the city attorney's office to produce a memorandum for the benefit of the council to, you know, kind of highlight some of the issues that I think were kind of at least identified and somewhat discussed in some of our private discussions, so that, you know, the council can kind of get up to speed on some of those issues. Any final questions or comments from anyone? Thank you again for being here. And for your service in Inglewood.
Thank you.
Yep, let's take five for a moment.
Mics are live during the break, so if you want your conversations private, please be cognizant.
Thank you for actually giving me this, because I just sent an email, Maureen, saying, "Where is that money?"
I don't know why. It was their previous attorney chick that did some of this, so I don't know.
That's why, that's why I called, I mean, and I appreciate it.
If I was a mayor, cereal.
No, no, I feel like...
When you first came, you were like, "Oh, man."
Yeah.
I didn't know, you know, that's it.
I'm trying to learn it.
You weren't, you weren't, you weren't.
I'm sorry, you got lectured. I was going to interrupt him here.
Hasn't budged, hasn't kept up.
It's a different situation.
It's closed. That's why, that's why.
You know, it's been a long time.
Thanks for being here. Real pleasure meeting you.
Chance to share more information?
I appreciate that.
I think the more communication we have, the better off and more aligned we'll be.
And I think that's just a lack of gratitude, you know what I mean? And I think perhaps it's an educational learning curve.
They must have had a project that just got planned.
They had hundreds of projects.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sure.
A few hundred grand.
I've heard that.
Like you said, the state...
How you doing?
I feel like we do everything.
I feel like we're...
We've been that, and we've been to get in trouble with fire. I feel like I would have been a lot.
That was him the other day, wasn't it?
Oh, I know.
You can always tell when you're in your early twenties for that little buzz, and I know, right?
Yeah.
And that's what she's saying, probably, you must have...
I didn't do it. I didn't do it.
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 Now I'm good.
Do you work for the city?
I do.
I haven't met you.
I'm Joe Parkwall. I'm the interim assistant city manager.
Oh, okay.
I'm a greener, greener of the house.
Oh, I didn't know that.
City manager.
Oh, okay.
I meet him sometimes for coffee.
Oh, yeah. Be happy to set up a time.
Okay.
Here's my email address. I have trouble keeping my voicemail emptied out, but...
Perfect.
All right. Well, I didn't know it was left.
Yeah, it was a good transition.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Where were you before?
I was the strategist.
Yeah.
This could be saved.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
But you got a hotel to stay in.
Yeah, I've been like this for two...
It hasn't been two weeks, has it?
No.
No, total. That's what I was saying. Get you in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe you can just call and chat.
Okay. Yeah.
I did her phone number, now if not, I'd try it.
I'll get with you more. I'll chat with her.
I know, I have it on my phone.
I'm a social...
Do you mind if I...
No, I don't care.
Okay. You can get into your car.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be...
Thank you.
We meet in anger at 2:30 tomorrow. Is it possible to make just five or 10 minutes?
Absolutely.
Five or 10, weigh in and stuff on this, make sure this, we get some...
Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you.
Honestly, you know, it's a good idea we chat, but like I said, anything would be a good starting point in my mind, you know what I mean? Of, hey, there's this issue, this issue, this issue, according to this law, you know, state statute, it should be this, or whatever, you know?
I guess you go like this.
Like I said, that's a good idea. Let's touch base tomorrow.
And we get 500 million sponsors.
Oh, terrible idea. There's a lot there. Yeah. Felt like we were kind of swimming at some point, and I'm like, oh, jeez.
I don't know, maybe you can just call and chat.
Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll get with you, I'll chat with her.
I know, I have it on my phone.
I'm the social app, yeah.
Do you mind if they?
No, I don't care.
You can get into your car, right? Okay.
Um, yeah, I'll be, um, we're meeting at your 2:30 tomorrow. Is it possible to make it just for 10 minutes? And we could like, for 10, weigh in and stuff on this, make sure that we get some. Okay, cool, yeah, thank you. Honestly, I, you know, like, it's a good idea we chat, but like I said, anything would be a good starting point in my mind, you know what I mean, of, hey, there's this issue, this is, she's an issue. According to this law, you know, state statute, it should be this, or whatever, you know. Like I said, that's a good idea, let's touch base tomorrow. Not a terrible idea, there's a lot there. Yeah, felt like we were kind of swimming in some funny, like, oh geez.
I'll have to take you to breakfast, then.
Where are you marked, don't forget?
And that, and that, have.
Straight out.
And it's like, yeah.
She's driving, she drives.
When she has to get.
Well, I'm ready.
I was, I was kinda hoping that 8:20 would have been the cutoff tonight, but, uh.
Me too.
All right.
There's a chance. Small chance.
Small chance.
Oh.
We'll do our best.
Yes.
I don't think I can go to the next housing authority meeting. No, I'm joking. I'm not that thin-skinned.
Well, and you clarified your position, maybe that'll help.
Huh?
Clarified your position, maybe that'll help.
I'm pretty sure they were clear.
You're a dreamer. Anybody want any mints?
No, thank you.
I just got one, thank you.
I'll take one if you want to throw one, I mean.
You really want me to?
Yeah. Thank you.
Nice catch!
Good throw.
No, they're not. Sorry.
If I could get folks to take their seats, we're about to get started in just a second here.
Ones Amy usually has are sugar-free.
Altway? Yeah, I always have Altway's if anybody wants any. How about a Halls or something for coffee?
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Uh, welcome back, we're gonna get on to our Public Information Officer update. Um, Communications Manager Allison Carney's present to give an update on the Inglewood Block Party, the 2018 sponsorship package, My Emma email, marketing software, and the Art Shuttle wrap and new logo. You are not Communications Manager, no.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm pinch-hitting along with Dorothy tonight. Allison is homesick, hopefully resting, not watching the council meeting this evening. Thank you. Yes, hopefully she is resting, so we will do our best, so bear with us. Um, and I'll try to be efficient tonight. I had a personal goal of 8:20, so hopefully, uh.
Yeah, let's do it.
He's ambitious, I like that.
I'll start.
Yeah, Broncos, too. All right, we're leaving.
However, if you don't speak more into that mic, it's not gonna be 8:20.
All right.
The dog will see to that.
I will speak into the mic. So, starting with Inglewood Block Party, uh, we did want to provide an update. Uh, staff has been working very hard in, uh, putting together a very good event. Uh, that is included, right now, 28 vendors have signed up to be on the block, which is great news. So we are busy planning the event and coordinating efforts to make sure that this is successful. Uh, it occurred to me that council would like to see, uh, more detailed budget information, given our discussion at the last budget meeting we had. Uh, this is just to date, and I'll try to summarize a couple of these are estimated costs. Uh, this does not include any, uh, any funding for entertainment, which will become, will be a cost. So to recap, we had $15,000 budgeted for this event, $5,000 for the professional services for Slate, and 10 otherwise. This will probably be, uh, in the ballpark of about $25,000 in just hard costs. So that's not including any soft costs in police, uh, which will require overtime. That does not include communications staff, that does not include park staff. That being said, uh, $5,000 of that, uh, $25,000 will be covered by Public Works by the way of the closing of the, of Broadway itself. Uh, they do have budget for street closures in the event that, uh, that happens, typically for construction, but block parties do happen. Uh, so, uh, we'll have $5,000 that are, that's covered outside of that 15, original $15,000 budget, as well as we're hoping for $5,000 in sponsorships. Again, we're, we're crossing our fingers on that one. We do have almost $2,000 already committed in sponsorships and are expecting more. So that is a positive. Uh, Allison has been beating the drum in the community to, to get more sponsorship. So that, that is a positive thing. It's expensive. Uh, we discussed at length about, uh, the, the overall expense and difficulty in putting on several signature events per year. Uh, so we're certainly supportive of the conversation that we had about limiting it to two. It, it is a lot of work to put together signature events, 4th of July. It's less staff time because it's a well-oiled machine at this point. Uh, but this year we put on two brand-new events, and so that's why you'll see these costs spike. $15,000 was our best estimate at the time. Uh, we did say, uh, at, at the time that closing Broadway was a more expensive option, and so that is why you'll see the extra $5,000 costs. And also that if we put in the time and effort to put on an event, we want it to be successful and something that the community enjoys. And so that, that requires, uh, taking the additional staff time to, uh, secure vendors and sponsors and, and also put on a good show. Any questions on Inglewood Block Party?
Councilwoman Martinez?
I just want to make sure I understand something that you said, um, so you said the $5,000 for closing Broadway was already part of the Public Works budget, so it's not technically an additional $5,000 for this event?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porta.
Yeah, um, I got to participate in a band that played for the city of Inglewood once, and, um, we did it for free.
Beats and Beats.
Yeah, we did it for free, and, um, there's a lot of bands who will do it for free just for advertisement. We don't have to pay for bands. Bands love to pay, play for big events where they can get notoriety. And, um, almost every band that I knew and I played with around the circuit would, would love to do it and definitely don't have to pay them a lot. Bands generally, you know, if a band makes 300 bucks a night, they're doing good. You know, a lot of them, and there are a lot of great bands making that kind of money. So we don't have to break the bank to go pay some band $1,000, $2,000. There are plenty great, so, I hope we're looking at that as well.
Yeah, that, that's a fair point, and, and this is estimating three bands because of the scope of time that we're trying to cover with the block closure. For 4th of July, to give you some context, uh, we hired a band, but we didn't provide sound. Uh, we, we made them bring sound equipment. And so, if, if we go for a cheaper option, we may have to provide sound. And so while it may not be $5,000 overall, there will be a cost associated with providing sound equipment.
Thank you, other questions on the Block Party? Councilwoman Bernadette?
I realize it's the first year, and I know we're gonna get behind the eight ball on that, so I'm not as concerned that there might have been a little misjudgment on some of the cost for this as there was for the, as there was also for the event, for the State of the City event as well. And I think that we're just gonna have to get our head wrapped around it and, and figure that out and how we're partnering. But at some point, just like the Final Fridays, they just started. It was a snowstorm and the business just started it. And the businesses did it the next month, and it was a snowstorm. And then the third month, it was a huge success and has continued to, you know, to kind of go on. So I'm not looking for perfection out of this thing, just that we kind of get some, um, learn something from this and kind of move on, but I don't want to, I don't want to lose a lot of money on it, and I hope that the, I hope we have some way of doing the accounting as well for what we think this brings in or what kind of activity this brings and what kind of new businesses might be a little bit more interested because they see us partnering. I'd like to make sure that we have some kind of, um, I don't know, it's gonna be, it's a difficult thing to measure, but some kind of feedback on whether, um, this has a positive effect on the businesses and bringing people in or even bringing new businesses in because they see us, um, doing this piece of it. We're kind of stuck, too, because we already advertised it, we already put it out there that we're doing this, it's already on the calendar. The mayor already spoke, gotta happen now. So, um, and it's in the, it's in the paper, and people are actually looking forward to that. I've had people mention that and think that it was a good idea. So, um, it's a learning curve, I would like to keep the cost so that we're being reasonable, but I, I think there's a certain amount of that in there already.
Yeah, and we're, we're estimating 25 to be the max, so we are trying to look at every area we can to save, uh, money in putting this event on. We'll provide an, an entire after-action report after the event, so that council can understand all of the costs and hopefully get some report out from businesses as well as to their, their level of success and feedback from the event.
Awesome, and then obviously I hope it goes well enough for, even if it's just minor, that we get more sponsorships, and, and you're right, we didn't have a lot of time to do that piece of it this time, so.
Absolutely.
But thanks for your work on it, I greatly appreciate it, and we're at least moving, trying to do it.
Allison mostly, I'm just, I'm standing.
Okay, yeah, you know, I meant you sitting in for Allison.
Yes.
Allison, I didn't mean him for real. It was just that he's sitting in your spot.
I assume the post-report will probably include our own internal, you know, operations. This event coordinator from Communicate, is that our internal portion of time? Excuse me?
That's Slate.
So, you know, just like we did for State of the City, perhaps might be helpful, uh, to get an idea of what the true cost of this event is, so that folks can kind of understand the difference between out-of-pocket expenses and internal, um, yeah, direct costs, that might be a great thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and then finally, uh, maybe it's a good segue to the sponsorship package, but was the, oh, because the sponsorship package begins January 1, is that kind of the idea?
That's correct, although there is, uh, information you'll, in your packets, you have this beautiful sponsorship package that gives you the levels of sponsorship available, uh, for 2018. Uh, in the information that was sent out to prospective sponsors, uh, today, I believe, or early tomorrow, there is information about, uh, the, the Inglewood Block Party. So there is another opportunity, and we're still trying to beat the drum, uh, for, for sponsors. Uh, I, I think, uh, oh, additional information here. Uh, the sponsorship levels were based off of a study done by Slate, so it is comparable to other communities. Uh, it, it is also a deal, it sounds like a lot of money, but we, we typically look at for being a title sponsor on a, on a signature event, $5,000 a pop. So, uh, if you try, if you want to sponsor all events and get into the magazine, actually, that, that upper level at $25,000 is, is a pretty good deal for, for what we're used to. Any questions on sponsorship?
Something going around, around tonight, it's a rough night, you know, don't get me sick. I feel like I need to wear a mask. Anything else on the, or any questions, I guess, or comments from the council regarding the sponsorship?
Just depends on how close you are to Eric.
I will hand off to Dorothy for My Emma.
Thank you, um, as you can, in your packet, My Emma is an email marketing software. Um, the, the great advantage of this, I think, will be that it'll reduce duplication of emails from different departments, uh, to our citizens. Um, you know, the police will send out emails, the city manager will send out emails, Parks and Rec will send out emails, and we want to make sure that people are getting the information that they request, um, and that's appropriate. Um, and I think the software is very affordable and will help us do that in a very professional and graphically interesting way. So, um, you may see some of these, I don't think it's going to have a direct and dramatic effect on our citizens, it's just going to improve the way we communicate with them. Are there any questions? Go, Emma, yes, sir. Okay, um, I guess that means we're moving on to the rebranding of the Art Shuttle. Um, as you may know, we have two new shiny white shuttles, um, that require some branding and color. Um, instead of just using the, um, old, um, Art Shuttle logo, um, we thought it was a good time to take a new look at this. Actually, the Cultural Arts Commission has been talking about rebranding the Art Shuttle for the last couple of years, yes, as, as Councilmember Martinez is, is well aware. Um, and the idea originally that there was art at all the different stops has since fallen by the wayside as totally unsustainable. Um, so focusing on, uh, the shuttle as a free shuttle that brings our community together, it's highly visible, that markets the concept of Inglewood as a, uh, city, if you'll forgive me, on the move, um, is kind of where we want to go with these designs. Um, we shared these, uh, designs with the Cultural Arts Commission at their Wednesday meeting, and they gave a thumbs up, um, but only had a question, uh, which is the same question we bring to City Council tonight, is what should we call this exciting, new, vibrant design? Um, staff has recommended two, um, options. One is the Inglewood Trolley, um, and the other is the Mile. Um, I think personally either one would work, but would love to hear council's recommendation moving forward on how this branding would proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Porta.
You know, one of the things I, I would personally wish that would be on there was it ties our people with our community and with our businesses. This doesn't seem to, I don't get what the Mile is. I mean, I, I've, I've heard about the Broadway Mile, but not everybody that comes here understands that. And I'd rather them get on this, a shuttle that says, this brings our people to our community and to our businesses, somehow tie in that, we want them to shop when they ride this, because, you know, although it's free to them, this is not a free shuttle. And, uh, we, we sure would hope that they would get the idea of new people come to this city, that this might stop at some businesses where they could go in and shop, and, um, I like the Trolley a lot more than the Mile, just because I don't get the Mile, I just don't. Uh, the Trolley makes sense, but if somewhere we could save, uh, a, a, a cheap way to, to shop at our stores, or, you know, something that ties in our business community who's, you know, helping for this.
And, and I will say that, um, part of the recommendation is to spend some money on redoing the maps that are available at businesses and city offices throughout the community. There's an example. And having that information, the, the route, um, some of our key businesses, uh, would be a perfect opportunity to highlight just that.
I'd just like, when I look at this, to know that this is going to businesses as well.
Yes. Very good.
That's all I only comment.
Uh, I think it was Councilwoman Martinez?
It was actually Councilwoman Reitz.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reitz.
Well, I would prefer, if we're gonna pick one of the two, it'd be the Inglewood Trolley, but, uh, you know, we still have a fair share of art within our community. Uh, how about the Art Trolley, so you kind of tie the two together?
I'll, I'll say my comments with it.
Okay, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez?
I, of course, would love to keep with the Art Shuttle, but the Cultural Arts Commission doesn't have the funding to have art at each stop, and we've been struggling with it for years. We'd love to have that, we just don't have that in our budget. I mean, the yearly budget is like $50,000, and one sculpture is more than $50,000, so we just don't have that. Um, and we've kind of brainstormed ways that we could maybe still make it fun and still have some kind of art. We talked about maybe doing some kind of like Inglewood historical factoids, or pictures of what used to be there, or whatnot, um, so I don't know if we've considered any other options, um, in addition to the rebranding. Um, I do also like the Inglewood Trolley, I think it says what it is. Um, so there's that, I just wonder if there's gonna be an interesting piece at each stop of whatever it is, um, whatever form it takes?
I know that the Cultural Arts Commission, uh, discussed having those informational signs. That would be in addition to the basic signs that we're proposing for this. So that would be an additional, um, cost.
Sure.
But a very, it, it could be done, it could be very valuable. I think the, the point was to identify this as Inglewood. The art bus could be anywhere in any community. So we're trying to, to brand it that way, as, as you point out.
Yes, and I also was not able to make the Cultural Arts Commission meeting, you know, I had a pet emergency, so I was at the vet all night, but, um, I did hear about how it went, and so I'm sure the, the commission is really excited about getting some movement towards this again and revamping it, so it doesn't just sit dusty on a shelf like I feel like it has been. Um, so I think the new buses are a really great opportunity to take advantage of kind of refreshing this. And then have we explored any other opportunities with business sponsorships, or helping, businesses help us maybe with, if the reprinting of the maps, or getting their businesses located on there, or have we considered that?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, I know that, uh, one, one opportunity is, and we've been working with Swedish to, to try and see if there's any extension of the route possible, and I, I know Community Development has been working with them, uh, so that's a potential opportunity. These are pretty cheap, we, we do have the budget for, for, I think they're 20 cents a pop. Uh, so we were planning to do, uh, reprinting of, of these as well, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay, I was just curious, because I think it says now, just like the stop number, and maybe the piece of art that was there or something, and so we'll obviously have to put something else there, even if it's just the numbers. Yeah, I'm excited to get this. Yeah, I'm excited to get this kind of kick-started again, so thank you.
Thank you, I apologize, I'm not sure who was next on this side, Councilmember Russell or Barrantide?
I actually like Councilmember Gillett's suggestion, but along with that, just one thing that I've been thinking about, new white buses and sponsorships, why don't we have sponsors advertise on the side of the bus? And, I mean, that would be a great way to tie the businesses in and generate some revenue at the same time.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrantide?
Always thinking money. I agree with Councilmember Gillett too, I would like Inglewood on it. I mean, at this point, the art bus has confused people, it's been, since I was on council before, when that was supposed to be a partnership between MOA and the city, and it was supposed to not be us purchasing it, it was supposed to be a vehicle for people to sell their art. Apparently, having it at bus stops isn't a big sales generator, so it didn't, it didn't go, because there was supposed to be this ever revolving stock of art, because people would sell a piece and then move, move on, and now we have some businesses that would prefer not to have the art in front of them, because it limits their, it takes up sidewalk space, it's public, the public access, and maybe if they want to do a patio or they have other things they want to do, it has prevented some people from being able to do some things down there. So needs, we need to be a little bit more strategic about how we're doing it and where we're placing it, and making sure that we're not crowding it up too much, so that the pieces that we do, if we are going to do art, are a focal point instead of a marketing tool, which was what that was before, it was a marketing tool, didn't work. But I, I agree, if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that Inglewood is in the name somehow. If we advertise on, on the bus, I'm not sure what that would look like or how RTD does that, but if we could at least look into it, I'm not sure if somebody decides not to do it anymore, how much the cost is to repaint or do things, or what kind of stuff we would want on there, but that, that actually might be a nice, a nice idea. But I like the Inglewood Trolley feel, or Inglewood, as long as Inglewood's in the name, I'm not going to, I, I think that that would be a good idea, even if it was the Inglewood Mile, but I'm not sure that, that correlates as well. As long as Inglewood's in the name, I agree with that. And I'm sorry that Museum of Outdoor Arts thing didn't work, but we tried it and, and it's time to move on, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson?
I love this, I think it's fresh, I love all the colors, I agree with the Inglewood being on it, some form of it, so Inglewood Trolley is great. I wondered whether, I've seen on some of the buses, some that I've taken, where there's sort of a, a window film that could be used for advertising, I don't know if we can pursue something along that lines, where you actually can see through it, but, but you, but the people on the outside see an advertisement, I don't know if that's costly for a business to do, but maybe it's something you've looked into already.
Well, my understanding is that the way that this is designed, it would have that filament.
Oh, okay.
So the, the issue with sponsorships is that as soon as you allow advertising for, for the shuttle, you kind of open the door.
Yes.
I mean, we have very, because of First Amendment rights, we have a very narrow way that we can regulate that, so while it's a great idea and concept, I totally agree that we, if we can generate revenue, if this is an opportunity, we should look into it and we can do a little bit more research, but my understanding is that we can't close it off to say, well, we only want Inglewood local businesses to, to sponsor or to advertise on, on these shuttles. So I think you just got to be aware that we can certainly look into it, but it does open up that door potentially.
I actually like it just the way it is, when I'm thinking about who could advertise on it, but I also would.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, I also think, excuse me? Did you have something to say?
Yeah, let's, let's leave the floor for Councilmember Olson, she is, her floor.
I missed it though, what did you say?
Somebody said shotgun willys and I said.
Oh, yeah, they're also not in Inglewood. The other thing would be the, the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, maybe there is some way to do something with them on the rewrite of this, maybe they'd want to help, I don't know, but I know that they have their, their brochure that they've been working on too with the, with the different businesses, of course, that's way outside of the shuttle too, they're far beyond the Mile. But I love it, I love the color, I think it's got this pop, I think it'll be great seeing this go down the street and, like, whoa.
I don't think people will miss it.
No, certainly not.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments here, yeah, serious. You know, it's sounding like we have some general consensus around Inglewood Trolley, you know, I also kind of will mirror those concepts, I like Inglewood Trolley, I certainly want the word Inglewood in there, and I agree, it's less confusing than Mile, and so Inglewood Trolley might be kind of the winner. You know, I'm wondering if Transportation Advisory should look at this, did they have a role in this process at all? If it's moving away from arts into more of a transportation realm or economic development realm, perhaps, you know, a couple of other bodies might be worth talking to about it?
Transportation, what we've talked about is, you know, expansion of the route, maybe hours or, you know, something along that lines, but the actual look of the bus, no. I mean, the, has been, the reason I threw out their Art Trolley is because that was something that they kind of had talked about in one of the meetings, because of, we have more art per capita than any other community in the state, plus we have the Trolley, which is a part of a historical part of Inglewood. So those two together kind of explains a lot about what Inglewood has been and what we are. And it would still fit in, and now this is not transportation, but it'd still fit in with the potential advertisement, it's just placards that they do on the side, which I think is actually a great way to help sponsor that, I think we could probably get a lot more people within our community that would be interested in doing that. Yeah, we may have someone we don't want always, but those things do change.
You know, and that's all my talking points or questions and stuff, well, you know, I agree, I think we could look at an advertising panel, those kind of white panels that wouldn't be a wrap, you know, the wrap when everything still exists, there would just be a advertising piece on the side that could be leased by whoever, and I agree, I'd love to, you know, offset some of our costs. I guess my question would be, would we have to share some of that revenue with RTD or no?
I would imagine.
We'd have to look into that, I think that's a possibility.
And so maybe if we find that the split of the revenue is going to go back at the same ratio as it's funded, maybe we find that that's not so attractive, so maybe that's a question that we want to answer prior to getting too excited about advertising. But I do think advertising, both internal and external, is definitely something we should be looking and thinking pretty hard about, and, you know, perhaps Transportation, if you think doesn't have a role, I do think ACE has a role in, you know, looking at, you know, trying to drum up some interest or, you know, what type of advertising opportunities on a bus would businesses be interested in.
Well, I would stress the whole idea of reinvigorating this, is to increase ridership, increase visibility, and I know that Allison Carney has plans to roll this out with a big splash and a magazine, lots of advertising, so I think there'll be lots of opportunities for, I can't help myself, people to get on board.
And speaking of getting on board, you know, I'd say, you know, getting on board with the concept that we're a home for art, I don't think this is a statement that we're getting away from, you know, I keep in mind, you know, the Art Walk just rebranded across the street, I think the, you know, here out front at the circle, the art visibility has been a success, I think, you know, at these bus stops, we're struggling with that a little bit, and so, you know, just to, you know, I would say that, you know, we're not giving up on this art identity by any stretch, I think it's just an identity that we were lacking on some of these bus stops that didn't really connect on a real meaningful level, and so, you know, when I first kind of heard about, oh, we're going to kind of think about rebranding, I'm like, oh, I just, I thought we were kind of getting some minimum with the art with the rebrand, but again, as long as I think we're not giving up on this art identity generally, you know, I think I'm great with that. Really excited to hear about Swedish, you know, potentially being willing to fund the expansion of hours, not necessarily route, I believe it's hours, and is Craig part of that conversation as well? Excellent. You know, as far as expansion of route, you know, perhaps that now might be a good time to consider that as well, I know we looked at expansion over to Kaiser, that was also a pretty expensive kind of shift, but, you know, if there is renewed interest from Swedish and Craig, perhaps there might be renewed interest from a Kaiser along Broadway that could extend the route along Broadway, which would be dreamy for the businesses, and, you know, maybe we can take advantage of some of that synergy if the healthcare industry is so interested in this service. I think that's all I had. Anybody else with anything, Councilmember Barrantide?
I'm just a little concerned about what the timeline you're looking at. You said you have two new buses, white, pretty buses, and you want to get this done, I'm just trying to see when you guys are trying to get this done, and if we're going to send this to a bunch of other committees to get feedback, or whether we're sticking to some kind of timeline you had. And also, have we looked at any of the private piece of this? I was very, and have mentioned before, I was very impressed with the Sherwood bus that goes on Final Fridays to Sheridan and Inglewood to certain destinations where people just pay $5 and get on, and I don't know whether for some special events, and that obviously there's a, a free market interest in doing things like that, so maybe we could figure out how we could partner up with them instead of maybe changing routes or doing hours, I, I don't know what the interest is from the private market or how much, or how well he's been doing, and whether we're going to interfere with your timeline if we keep sending this around.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful to get clarification on what the consensus is tonight, just so, so we know, I know that we are anxious to get these buses wrapped so they're not white.
You know.
We could look at and do the research on the sponsorship for a panel, that wouldn't inhibit us from, from moving forward, other than our graphic artist is watching and probably cringing.
Just a clarification, I'm not against ACE doing it, I wasn't against the businesses doing it, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because that would be.
Sure, and I think I maybe can help there, you know, it sounds like Transportation, we, you know, it sounds like we don't want to send this to Transportation, I think if anything, ACE is probably after you find out, hey, we're, you know, a board is possible and we can put a board on, you know, how should we manage that program, or who are the businesses that we might want to talk to for advertising, and so I think you just fold ACE in post, you know, the decision-making here, not necessarily prior. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Did you have something else, Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say, I think the expansion, I would love to see it expanded, I think that could be a secondary conversation, not included with this, I think if we are going to expand it, we should bring in the Transportation Commission, because they've mentioned specifically that they want to see it expanded, and the other businesses that have mentioned it, and maybe the Chamber and ACE, because their businesses may, you know, want it to come near them as well, so I think those two conversations could be separate.
Yeah, definitely agreed, you know, my thought was, you know, perhaps we can take the temperature of a few and take it to some of these other committees, I agree that that expansion question. I think the first question probably that needs to be answered is, is Swedish serious about, you know, funding this to the tune of what it would require, and if they are, then I think we should be getting on our pony to get this out to those committees to get that feedback, because we know there's going to be a little bit of bottleneck there. And if we're ready for that, maybe it's now time and we can talk. Well, extension of hours, I think, but, you know, my thought is, if we're talking about the extension of hours, maybe we take the temperature about the idea of extending the route, and if there's interest there, then I think that's a, you know, a transportation issue very particularly. Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, I was just going to say, some folks have mentioned to me that during the summer concerts, they would like it to be expanded hours during those times, like the folks near the Malle Center, they would like to be able to ride the bus down to the concerts and go back, so I don't know if that helps narrow it down, and I don't know if there's a way to do like, if there is interest in expanding it to the weekends, maybe like a couple of pilot weekends where maybe we try it on a Saturday or Sunday and see if it's, if it's even doable, but I know for sure there's interest on the concert evenings.
And I know, I think the issue though is, you know, we're going to be somewhat beholden to the funding source, right, and that's why the more diverse the funding source, the better off we are, because a Swedish, I think, interest is including early morning hours during the week. What is it?
To 8.
To 8.
At PM.
PM.
10 to 8.
Oh, they do want to extend to later as well, okay, great, so maybe there is some possibility for evening hours there as well, Councilmember Yates?
Part of the other concerns from Transportation is maybe we need to look at some of our stops, because we have some new facilities throughout town that are higher density, which is, would help with transportation issues.
Yep, thank you for that, particularly some servicing seniors, I know, and the Traditions, when they did the grand opening there, they were asking about it.
We don't necessarily have to be changing the route, but maybe some of the stops.
Yep, I agree, how we're servicing people as things have changed, since this has been installed, it's probably a good conversation to have. Anything else to wrap this conversation up from anyone? Thank you for that good presentation. We'll move on to Councilmember Choice, would anybody like to kick us off this evening on Member Choice? Thank you, Councilmember Yates, anything from you?
Enjoy football.
Oh geez, thank you, Councilmember Martinez?
Anything for me?
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I had the great pleasure of going over to the Household Hazardous Waste Pickup on Saturday, I brought a truckload of my old technology in my house, and it really is, was great, I'm just so glad that we were doing that, so kudos. Sorry, I was supposed to help with the tool event and we had a little incident in my work that I had to go up to take care of, but I hope it was a great, hopefully you'll talk for a minute on that. I did want to just say that I'm a little bit concerned about, I, I'm glad we had the conversation with Inglewood Housing Authority, I really worry about when we start to say things that, you know, we've heard from citizens, that I think it's good to bring those up, but the way which, in which we can say them makes a huge difference in how it sounds. You know, they'd never even heard of some of these things, and our tone sometimes when we have people here is accusatory, and I'd just like to ask ourselves to think about, how do we honor the people that come here who are serving, and there are good things to be asking here, no doubt about it, but let's try, I mean, I felt like we were baiting them sometimes tonight. So I would like to make sure that we, maybe we all send out, or maybe we ask them to send out the, the emergency number to us, that when citizens call us, we can tell them what that number is, that 24-hour number, I think I actually do have it, and, and that we let them know when we hear things that we don't, you know, wait until later, so I do think that the, the minutes thing continues to come up and maybe, maybe they just need to know, I don't know, because probably isn't our role, but you can take an iPhone and tape anything and do it on an iCloud so easily, but maybe they just need, I don't know if we have this responsibility to them, but to teach them how to do this, this is not a hard thing. I, I, we all use recordings, I'm sure, and load them up to people and places, so it's an important part of getting information out to everyone, I think that would be good. But I, I thought it was good tonight to have them here, I think it breaks the ice a bit, I would, I really, really am thankful that we have them here, I think they're doing really good work, and I've never seen them not be responsive when citizens have had, have called me, and they used to call me all the time. So, oh, I know what the other piece was with that. It seemed as though, at least, Mayor, you had an agenda of things that you wanted to talk to them about tonight, that you had a checklist, it would be really helpful when we know some of those, that we have them also ahead of time, so we're thinking, because you started raising things, that there was another conversation you'd had, I just think it'd be more open for all of us to know what those are, and it'd probably help guide the conversation a little bit better.
Agreed.
So, for any of us, if we, I mean, you, you all set up the meeting, but I, I, I wasn't sure what the agenda was for tonight, it was just on here, which I was glad we're here, we're having it, I'm really, we, I, we haven't had a meeting with Inglewood Housing Authority for years in this body, so it was great to, great to do that.
I'll chat a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think we did it once, yeah, but just once.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell?
Two people back, two directors back.
Actually, I do appreciate having the Inglewood Housing Authority here this evening, I thought it was very productive, and I hope that it resolves some of the issues, because some of these issues have been going on and on and on, and they've been talked to several times, and it's very frustrating when they're not paying attention, or they don't listen, or they don't think they have to listen. So I'm, I'm very thankful that they came. I have a couple of questions, and I'm not exactly sure that I know the, the way the agenda is set up for the budget, do we vote on the budget at first reading and then have the public hearing, or is it the other way around?
I've got the mic, so, so you'll have the public hearing next Monday, then you'll have first reading and second reading.
Is that the proper order of doing it, Allison?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, I don't know, I, I do have a question about the budget, the police headquarters, the funds from the police headquarters construction was put in with the Capital Projects, and I would really like to see that separated out and kept in its own fund, so we can keep track of how that money is spent.
Yeah, we do have a separate fund, it's called the Police Headquarters Construction Fund, I believe, for the budget.
And I will tell you, the money has been put, let's see, 2... Now, I don't know if I wrote down the page.
It's actually 207, the Capital Projects Fund.
It's actually 207, the Capital Projects Fund. And I believe what the, on page 207 is a compilation of 208, 209, and 210. And that income has been put in there and I would just like to keep it in its own separate fund so we can keep track of where the money goes when we spend it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we're required to do too by the parameters ordinance that you adopted earlier this year as council. So that will be tracked and I'll look into seeing why that, not the delineation, because we did create a specific fund to hold the monies so that we aren't commingling them and can track the progress of the project.
Right, yes, bless you.
I think that's on page 210.
The last one is, but it's put, the money is put into page 207.
Right.
Okay, alright, thank you. I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Berentan?
The Inglewood Housing Authority, this has been going on for years, at least four years, with not providing documentation or minutes or honoring core requests. And I think the mayor has done a beautiful job of following up on all of the public requests time and time again that I have made over the last two years about the problems going on with that board. I was very dismayed and a little hesitant to go on this board. I attended with Councilmember Russell as an audience member for most of the last year and a half and was very dismayed with the way that they treated and spoke about the two liaisons that were there, Councilmember Yates and Councilmember Gillett. And I kind of understood why they stopped going. The concerns that were coming from the constituency and not being able to get information were very disconcerting and they weren't coming back with resolutions, but pushing back and acting as if having anything to do with them, that they didn't have to honor anything that we asked them for. And there was a huge amount of pushback and facts don't have feelings. When you ask somebody to follow the law, it's not rude or mean, it's, you're supposed to follow the law. And there was a huge amount of pushback. So I realized that they're trying to do something new and different and that it's a little foreign to them, that they don't have the kind of autonomy that they believed that they had. But I really appreciate, apparently not everybody in council heard me for the last year and a half, and I appreciate that the mayor did listen to me and followed through, along with the city attorney in following through when I made requests publicly and said there are problems going on, there are purchases being made, there are things being done in executive session, this is not the law. And they followed through and took it seriously, licked into it, and are trying to bring them on board so that we don't continue to have this problem into the future. These are very serious, including that the purchase of the property that they made, which was a city property, was sold to a developer and that they bought off of Wesley, may actually not be a legal sale because they didn't do it legally. They are paid well. Mr. Graber's paid six figures and I do expect people in those positions to know what the law is and to follow it. This is not a volunteer position. They are well paid, they know what they're doing, they've been in this business for a long time, and we need to hold them to a standard of accountability with our assets and the job that they need to do. This is serious business. So I do think that the mayor met with them numerous times, quite honestly, and so did our city attorney. And so they were well aware of the issues that were coming in and nobody got, nobody got blindsided. And I've been talking about it for a year and a half and before even I was on council. So again, thank you very much, Mayor Jefferson, for doing, following through and hearing my concerns. The budget, the Budget Advisory Council Report that we were given as part of our packet in that newsletter, it was not made public. And so I didn't realize that. So if we get something and we're making comments about it on the dais and somebody goes, where's that report? And I go, here's a link. And then they go, no, that's just our draft. And I go, well, I don't believe we got a draft of something because that looked like it was their report to us. So, and in keeping with what the charter was, so if we, and then when I went to look, it was given to us in the council newsletter. And then I went to look for the council newsletter as a citizen, looked for the council newsletter, and it hasn't been updated, I can't find it for all of 2017. So if we're going to be presented material in our packet that we're relying on to make decisions and commenting on that has to be available to the public. And so we have some catching up to do. And then if it truly was just a draft, then I'm a little confused why it was given to council or at least not, I don't think it was, but if it was, then if we could check on that, then maybe it should've just had draft on there. Because then when people go, well, where are you getting this information from? You're quoting people from this committee that they have this concern that there's serious trouble going on in the city with our budget and our finances. And then I go to say, give it to them and they can't, they can't access it. So if we could take care of that and then catch up the council newsletter for 2017 and then the council request on the budget for the FTEs that I made, I would, I would like to have that. I actually have some old budgets that kind of helped me with some of the staffing questions I had, but I really would like it so that all of council has that information. The other, the other problem with what Councilmember Russell was, was bringing up is that if you go to the, because we finally get the financial information on 103, page 103, and then it's got the, the funds here, and it's got this capital project fund, which is a huge amount of the fund uses, and the pages prior to it are the capital improvement projects that you're hoping add up to, I think it's on page 64 maybe, I don't know. I think 64, where it's got the, you know, the little spreadsheet here, let me see. Yeah. So we've got some spreadsheet with both the five-year plan on here and what's gonna happen in 2018. I'm sure you guys have all seen this. And so what you believe is that these following pages then are going to lead you to the number that's gonna be the capital projects, but this does not add up to $30 million. So you do have some special funds in here with utility and water and, but, and there is, there is a mistake on the, on the facilities in operation, cuz it's listed as $440,000, but the request was only for $400,000. And if, and I'm sure it's, maybe it's a typo or something, if you guys could check that out. But it doesn't add up to what the number is here. So if I could get some more information on exactly what this preceding piece was after the capital improvement project prioritization and the five-year capital plan and where it's gonna tie into this capital project fund would be useful.
You?
And so I, I mean, I do agree with Councilmember Russell, it needs to be separated out because you have some issues with some money between 2017 and 2018 on the merging of all of those capital funds. So if we could take a look at that so that I can compare apples to apples and kinda know what's going on with that, that would be awesome. The only other thing would be, and I realize this from going back from some other budgets, which I actually kept, don't know why. They're gonna have a bonfire after I die. They're just gonna have all this paper to burn. But then, and I realize that on occasion, it's a little difficult for the capital funds project between the actual and the adopted budget for the next year, but by the time we adopt a budget, we are pretty far into the, into the year. And so I'm a little confused why the numbers are so far off. So if we could take a look at that as well. And that's, that's at least a beginning, so we'll just kinda start there. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to mayor's choice. I did just wanna let council know a couple things. Last week, I was able to give a good presentation along with Manager Keck to the CML Mayor's Retreat Friday morning. We talked a lot about our transportation, or I'm sorry, our partnerships on multiple different levels with our partnership on wastewater, River Run Service Center. Denver Fire, nothing else. But it went really well, I think represented us well. I also wanted to let the council know that I did apply and was accepted to the Big Horton Leadership Academy for Energy Summit. I did attend this weekend up in Colorado Springs, talking about energy efficiencies and environmental sustainability. And it's a pretty eclectic group as far as political views and, and hope that we might have something good to report that the city can use at the end of this. Also want to talk just a little bit about the agenda for EHA. Obviously, that was kinda the first of a kind meeting, a sort of difficult conversation in my mind, hoping to avoid, I was really hoping to avoid some of the public discourse on some of these issues that I hope they would resolve at the last few meetings. You know, I just wanted to identify some of the, you know, items that we had identified and discussed in sort of our private discussions. You know, I recognize that there is some disjointment, given the amount of time that has passed and what, who, which different members were involved. So again, I just wanted to at least identify those issues for the council's benefit. Last week at mayor-manager meeting, I did request a memorandum from the city attorney's office highlighting all these issues for council's benefit. Last week was a little bit of a short week, you know, we are gonna meet again tomorrow to try to outline that for the council's benefit, to catch everybody up to speed on all of these issues. On the budget, you know, do we, you know, one of my recent constituent meetings, we had some conversations around marijuana proceeds and projections for marijuana. And I know we don't have a separate fund necessarily, right, for marijuana, but what about tracking? Is it pretty, in our software or whatever, is all marijuana revenue easily identifiable?
Yes.
Thank you. Both from special tax and regular tax?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's all I had. City manager's report?
I'll just give a brief update. Three, three statistics from this past Saturday's Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project. 14 sites, 170 volunteers, zero accidents. Yeah, and yes, 14 properties that are blessed. It was just so incredible to see the number of volunteers who came out, who worked the program and everything from fencing, painting, lots of trees and shrubs being cut down. That's, I got stuck on a tree crew, it was unbelievable. We created a 50-foot-high pile, it's unbelievable, but our, our folks are gonna be shredding that up and 120 yards of trash. So helping people clean up their yards, it was very, very good. And it's just good to see the, see the folks whose homes are impacted, we're very, very thankful. So thanks to the, to the city council as well and the mayor for your support of that particular program. We wanna continue to see it grow and in the future and for the investment the city made of $5,000, that really went pretty far to help, help these properties. And so we're hopeful that we can continue to budget that to bless our citizenry that needs help.
Great job.
Could I ask the city manager just one quick question? I attended the code enforcement meeting and the code enforcement meeting that they had happened on Nextdoor, kinda like by mistake. I mean, they started talking, so he goes, let's meet. And then it wasn't noticed properly, so they couldn't take any formal action. But at the end of that meeting, they said, so are we gonna meet? And he goes, yeah, maybe the second week or the last week of September, maybe. And I go, no, you have like a regularly scheduled meeting, so even if they're an ad hoc group, if they're gonna meet, they meet the third Wednesday of the month, I think. So I don't think it's up to that committee to just kinda pick because then they didn't really have a room set and stuff, so it got kinda confusing. Is there some way to communicate that to them?
Sure is, yeah.
Okay, just let them know if they're gonna meet, they gotta, they gotta meet.
I'm gonna back down. Councilmember Berentan, I spoke with the chair after the meeting about getting back on a regular schedule, especially given the topic of interest to the public. So hopefully we can get that hammered down soon. I'll follow up.
And I understand because they haven't been meeting, so maybe he just thought they kinda met when he said they made, cuz he's the chair. But if we could just kinda, you know, remind them that there's a schedule on there, it would make it less confusing, thanks.
Well, is it within their authority to change the meeting time? I guess, you know.
I don't think so.
No? I know, I know some bodies have changed, you know, BAC has changed their meeting time unilaterally.
More formal action today.
I will say, they did ask and send an email to the liaison, so they were courteous about that, but you know, there was no, I guess I'm just thinking, does there need to be some formal memorialization of the change in meeting time for BAC then?
It's already been changed on our, the calendar, the master calendar. So as long as we know that's the case. I mean, I do look at Nextdoor, but I don't pay attention to that. But yeah, we set the calendar and that's.
I guess I'm just wondering if our ordinance says that they meet at this time and they're no longer meeting at this time.
It doesn't say that.
But it's on the board. So under the board for code. On the list for code, if you look up and you said, I wanna go to a code meeting, it says, this board meets at this time. So, you know, it's, it's kinda noticed in a way, so we need to make sure on the calendar if it's gonna be canceled, that it's on there. But if they're gonna change it, they just have to make sure we got it on there.
Thank you. Anything else, city manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Can I report this evening?
Thank you. We're hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Oh, no announcements! No, we are no announcements.